Recording in progress.
Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, May 7, 2024, regular business meeting of the Olympia City Council. For the record, we have a quorum with Councilmember Gilman, excused this evening. And so with that, we'll move on to announcements. And I'd like to call forward at this time, our Assistant City Manager, Debbie Sullivan.
Thank you, Mayor, and Councilmembers. For the record, I'm Debbie Sullivan, she/her pronouns, and I am the Assistant City Manager. After extensive nationwide search, I am thrilled to introduce you to our new Human Resources Director, Manny Bossar. Manny brings over 20 years of experience in human resources leadership positions, and he was most recent -- he most recently served as the Labor Relations Manager for the Department of Natural Resources. And before I invite Manny up, to say a few words, I just want to let you know, it's his birthday.
Good evening, Mayor Payne and City Councilmembers. For the record, my name is Manny Bossar. My pronouns are he/him/his. I do identify as Chicano. I want that on the record, if that's okay. As Debbie suggested, I'm the brand-new Director of Human Resources for the city, and so I'm really excited to be a part of the team. This is day number 12, and I just truly appreciate how I've been welcomed by staff and leadership. And so special thanks to Debbie. Thank you, Debbie. You've been an amazing leader and mentor to me already. So I appreciate you. And, you know, I have felt at home on day -- and day one, and I mean that. I felt like I could show up, be my authentic self, and so I really appreciate being part of this team. So I'm sure it's not lost on the council just how talented and committed staff are to this work, and I feel honored and humbled to be a part of that, and just really look forward to working with you folks in the coming weeks and in months. Just one other thing, I'd just note that my experience to date, that's 12 days in, suggests to me that this is, in fact, a city of hope and possibilities. And so I just really appreciate the welcome. So, thank you.
Welcome. Any comments from the dais? Well, we just liked -- Mayor Pro Tem, win.
Oh, my comments are brief, but Manny, hi. I just wanted to say thank you for choosing Olympia. We all read the announcement when you were chosen for the position and you accepted it, and we're all really, really excited. And I love Chicano, for the record. So thank you. Thank you for that. And I would say, you know, you bring your own -- your whole skill set and all your experiences, and how you identify is something that's also really important and certainly welcomed in chambers, and is certainly refreshing. So I really look forward to getting to know you. I think all of us do, all of our colleagues. Welcome to Olympia, and again, thank you for choosing us.
Well said. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Councilmember Madron.
Manny, I just want to say thanks for saying hi when we were saying goodbye to another department director the other day. And because the Mayor Pro Tem didn't say it, happy birthday.
Any additional comments? All right. Well, thank you very much, Manny. Welcome to Olympia. All right. So with that, I need a motion to approve this evening's agenda. All those in favor of the agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We have an agenda. So the first item this evening is Item 2A, which is Special Recognition, which is a proclamation recognizing Asian American and Native Hawaiian and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. And here to read the proclamation this evening is Mayor Pro Tem Nguyen.
Whereas in May, the United States recognizes and reflects on the sacrifices, contributions, and achievements made by generations of Asian Americans, Native Hawaiians, and Pacific Islanders, or AANHPI, and the storied history of our nation, and acknowledges the ongoing struggle to keep America's founding promise of a more perfect and more equal union. And whereas, Asian Pacific American Heritage Week was signed into federal law in 1978 to commemorate the date that the first Japanese immigrants arrived in the United States on May 7, 1843, and to recognize the contribution of Chinese workers to the transcontinental railroad, which was completed on May 10, 1869. And whereas, Asian Pacific American Heritage Week expanded into a full month in 1992 and is celebrated annually to recognize the historical and cultural contributions of these communities to American history, society, and culture. And whereas, in the year 2000, the Washington State Legislature declared the month of May as Asian Pacific American Heritage Month in recognition of this population with representation from 48 Asian and Pacific Island nations in our state. And whereas, these communities are an integral part of the beautiful diversity, history, and culture of Olympia, and their many achievements in areas such as arts, government, science, hospitality, business, and technology embody the American experience. And whereas, while we celebrate the achievements and contributions of Asian and Pacific Islanders that enrich our history, society, and culture, we must also acknowledge the structural discrimination and injustice that these communities have faced for generations through the present day. And whereas, Asian American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander Heritage Month provides the opportunity to elevate these communities and their roles in American history, and is a time to celebrate the advancement of civil rights and equal opportunity for all people. And whereas, the City of Olympia is honored to partner with the Asian Pacific Islander Coalition of South Puget Sound and South Puget Sound Community College to host an Asian American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islanders Heritage Festival on May 11, 2024. And now therefore, be it resolved that the Olympia City Council does hereby proclaim May 2024 as Asian American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander American Heritage Month in the City of Olympia, and reaffirms the city's commitment to supporting and standing with Asian Americans, Native Hawaiians, and Pacific Islanders, and encourage all Olympians to observe, recognize, and celebrate the culture, heritage, and contributions of these communities to our country, to our state, and to our city. Signed in the City of Olympia, Washington, the 7th day of May 2024, Olympia City Council, Dante Payne, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. And at this time, I'd like to invite up Lynn Crowley and members of the Asian Pacific Islander Coalition of South Puget Sound.
Good evening, and I wanted to say hi to everybody who is making the time to be here, but also definitely thank you for inviting us to be a part of today's meeting. My name is Lynn Crowley. I'm with the Asian Pacific Islanders Coalition, South Puget Sound. We are truly honored to have the opportunity to once again collaborate with the City of Olympia to put on the Asian American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islanders Celebration. And it is going to be held this year at the South Puget Sound Community College's Lacy Campus. So I wanted to invite all of you to join us to be part of this wonderful celebration. It is free and open to all. So we wanted to say, please, join us. Have fun, too. So I don't want to take too much more time to say more about Asian Pacific Islanders Coalition, but then I realize every time when I come, I always see some new faces. So maybe it is important for me to just share with you a little bit about what Epic South Puget Sound is doing. So for those of you who do not know, our coalition in this area was established back in 2003, while the overall Epic Washington was developed in the last part of 1990s because of a previous law that was passed that was seriously impacted Asian Pacific Americans. And we realized that sometimes collective energy is needed. And in this case, we definitely felt that. And therefore, a lot of different community organizations decided to join hand to actually form coalition. So the coalition is not just one organization. We have several organizations. And as, you know, Mayor Pro Tem already shared with everybody, we have a very diverse populations among us. And when it comes to Asian Pacific Islanders, we really are talking about more than 50, actually, because some of them are not necessarily recognized as a country or nation or state, right? But they are definitely around. So we wanted to share that with all of you. And because of that, I also like to make room for another one of our community's representatives who are here to also say a few words. Besides her, I also want to recognize Joy from the Chooks Nation, who also is among our fellow community organizations that is part of the coalition. So let me introduce you to Genevieve.
Thank you, Lynn, and thank you, City Council. My name is Genevieve Kenseko Chan, and I am a first-generation Filipina-American. I also am a part of the Commission for Social Justice and Equity at Olympia. And I just want to say, I'm so proud to have chosen Olympia to be my home. And part of my work with the Commission and my work with Lynn in this celebration is to celebrate and really be joyous about this place we call home, and to show all the different facets of what it means to be Asian American. So thank you again, and I do hope that you join us this Saturday from 11 to 4. We'll have food and performances and education, and just want to, again, be joyous and embrace one another, learn from one another, and thank you again for this opportunity.
Thank you. Again, I just want to say thank you for the opportunities to let us have room and also the resources to actually put this celebration event together. I also like to say thanks to those City Parks staff who are joined forces with us to put this together. Organizations like ours is not always easy to kind of obtain resources, as you may know. So we truly appreciate the opportunity to do so. And I hope we are going to have many years of collaborations to come. Thank you so much again for the opportunities.
Thank you, Lynn and Genevieve. So at this time, we're actually going to invite you to come forward for a photo with Council and also to receive the proclamation.
Okay. Thank you. Well, in that case, you should always join.
Okay. Any comments from the dais? Okay. So we will move on to Item 2B, which is also a special recognition item, recognizing Jewish American Heritage Month. And I will be reading that proclamation this evening. Whereas, the Jewish American experience is a story of faith, fortitude, and progress, and one that is connected to key tenets of American identity, including our nation's commitment to freedom of religion and conscience. And whereas, generations of Jews have fled to the United States in search of a better life for themselves and their families. And these immigrants made invaluable contributions in a myriad of ways in support of equality, civil rights, and civil rights through their leadership and achievements. And whereas, now recognized in May, Jewish American Heritage Month was first proclaimed in April of 2006 by presidential proclamation stating that the Jewish American story and the story of our nation as a whole is fueled by faith, resilience, and hope. And whereas, Jewish Americans connect it to their Jewish identity in a variety of ways, such as culturally, ethnically, religiously, and by following Jewish ethics and values. And whereas, 150 years ago, in 1873, the Hebrew Benevolent Society of Puget Sound, the first Jewish organization in Washington, was established in Olympia to create a cemetery. The cemetery is still in use and is the oldest Jewish cemetery in Washington. The Hebrew Benevolent Society was later absorbed by Temple Beth Atifilo. Founded in 1937, Temple Beth Atifilo continues to be a growing and vibrant community, currently growing their footprint in downtown Olympia with their courtyard expansion project. Whereas, Jewish Americans are racially, ethnically, socially, and politically and economically diverse, with approximately 12% to 15% of Jews in the United States being people of color. And whereas, in recent years, Jewish Americans have increasingly experienced antisemitism, including but not limited to physical attacks, vandalism, verbal and physical harassment, and hateful comments posted on social media and other online platforms. And whereas, this month, we honor Jewish Americans, past and present, whose experience and accomplishments are inextricably woven into the tapestry of our community, including places of worship, such as Temple Beth Atifilo in Olympia. The temple serves as the center for Jewish life and is active in the greater community, pursuing the work of Tikun Olam, which translates to "Repairing of the World," by advocating for immigrant justice, engaging in environmental stewardship, and collaborating with Interfaith Works and other organizations. And now therefore, be it resolved that the Olympia City Council does hereby proclaim the month of May as Jewish American Heritage Month in the City of Olympia, and encourages all Olympians to condemn antisemitism, hatred, and bigotry of any kind, to include Jewish Americans in all facets of civic life in our community, and to join our Jewish community in the work of repairing the world. Signed in the City of Olympia, Washington, the 7th day of May 2024, Olympia City Council, Dante Payne, Mayor. And at this time, I'd like to invite up our community members, Rabbi Seth Goldstein and Leslie Goldstein, here to receive the proclamation and to say a few words this evening.
Thank you very much, Mayor Payne and Councilmembers. We are honored to be here tonight, and we want to thank everybody here for Olympia being such a welcoming community. And we are very happy, proud residents of downtown Olympia. I want to also give a special acknowledgement to the law enforcement officers I see here for our partnerships with them and the work they do to keep this a safe home for us in Olympia. We love giving back to the community. We've been a sanctuary, home for a guest who needed sanctuary. We give -- prepare meals for the homeless, and we provide many other civic activities. We open our doors to everyone. We hold and have held in past years and beholden future years a Blinsapalooza, where we donate money to a charitable organization in the community. And we are just delighted to be here. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor Payne and members of Council. And I should say, Leslie is the president of the congregation, and we're not related. But just my connection, I'm Rabbi Seth Goldstein, and it's been an honor for me to be a part of this community and serve Temple Beth Atifilo for 20 years now. I've been in this community, and I came here because it was such an open and inclusive and welcoming community. And it's been a joy for me to continue to work to build a thriving and diverse Jewish community here in Olympia, one that is deeply connected within but also without to this -- to the Greater Olympia and South Sound community. And as the proclamation states, we've -- the Jewish community has been an integral part of Olympia since its founding, since even before the state of Washington. And so we're honored to continue that commitment and look forward to many future years of working together, continue to build vibrant Jewish community, working together with our interfaith partners, with partners in the greater community, especially when it comes to doing that work of social justice, of fighting bigotry, and of just building deep relationships. And we did complete our courtyard project, and next week, solar panels are going up. So we're excited about that as well. So thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And now we'll also invite you up to take a photo with you as well and present you with the proclamation.
And I'd like to invite two other members of our congregation and also the head of our cemetery committee, Oscar School, and our board member, Barb Sol.
Thank you. Any comments from the dais? I just want to say thank you to the rabbi and to Leslie for being here to receive the proclamation, and also to just say how wonderful it is that this is now the second year, I believe, that we're recognizing Jewish American Heritage Month here at the city, and we hope to keep it going. And I also just want to speak to, obviously, this is a -- these are certainly very trying times for our community, and it's moments like this where despite all of the negativity and the experiences that we're having with one of the oldest forms of hatred in the world, that we continue to thrive. And our congregation is an example of that here in Olympia. So thank you very much for being here. All right. So we will move on to Item 2C, which is also a special recognition item, which is a proclamation recognizing public service through the month of May. And I will turn it over to City Manager Bernie for some comments.
Thank you, Mayor Payne. Good evening, Mayor. Councilmembers. For the record, Jay Bernie, City Manager. Tonight, Council has before it a proclamation recognizing this week, May 5 through 11, as Public Service Recognition Week. This week, across the nation, public servants at the federal, state, county, tribal, and city levels are recognized for their work they do to keep our community safe, healthy, prosperous, and livable, for ensuring that government serves the people in trustworthy and transparent ways. But the proclamation does more than recognize one week, because the month of May has multiple weeks celebrating specific professions within the public service sector. As I call out these other recognition weeks, I want to acknowledge the many city staff who you see standing behind me, who are in the room watching, and the many more staff who may be watching online. This week, May 5 through 11, is Professional Municipal Clerk Week. City clerks are among the oldest public service roles. They are central to our work of transparency with the community. For example, staff in our clerk's office handle our public records requests. May 6 through 10 is Economic Development Week. The work of our economic development staff is focused not just on economic vitality for our community, but on economic justice for our community members. May 12 through 18 is National Police Week, and during this week, we pay homage to those who gave their lives in the line of duty, but also the appreciation for the work of the Olympia Police Department in keeping our community safe. We acknowledge the importance and the impact of emergency medical services on the health and safety of our community, as May 19 through the 25 is Emergency Medical Services Week. And also, May 19 through 25, we recognize National Public Works Week. As many of you know, my roots in this city run deep in public works. It's a privilege to honor all city staff this week and to honor these particular professions throughout the month of May. Our employees answer the call no matter the circumstance. In times of quiet, or times of emergency, or unrest, police and emergency services never stop answering our community's calls. Our water stays clean. Garbage and recycling get picked up without missing a beat. Our economic development team find creative, barrier-breaking ways to help keep downtown businesses open. Our city clerks continue to respond to public records requests and ensure the transparency of the work of city government. I'll repeat what I told city staff in a recent email. The work you do for the City of Olympia is vital to moving our community forward. I am honored to lead you and serve with you. Thank you for making a difference. I also want to take a quick moment to recognize our partner employees at the tribal, county, state, and federal levels, and thank them for their service as well to our community. I will now turn it over to Council to read a proclamation. Afterwards, we have a few representatives from the groups we're recognizing tonight who'd like to say a few words. And after Council comment, we'd love to grab a photo with all of you and them.
Whereas, since 1985, Public Service Recognition Week has been celebrated during the first week of May to honor the people who serve our communities as federal, state, county, municipal, and tribal government employees. And whereas, public servants are our family, our neighbors, and our friends, who every day with efficiency and integrity provide the diverse services to our community demands of its government. And
Whereas, without these public servants, at every level, continuity would be impossible in a democracy that regularly changes its leadership and elected officials. And whereas, public servants make crucial contributions in every American community, reflect the full diversity of our nation, and deliver on the promise of a government for the people and by the people. And
Whereas, throughout the month of May, we honor a number of specific groups of public servants who deserve to be highlighted. And whereas, on May 5 through the 11, 2024, we honor the oldest among public servants, the professional municipal clerk, and celebrate the role of city clerks as impartial information centers on the functions of local government and as critical links between residents and local governing bodies. And
Whereas, on May 6 through 10, 2024, we celebrate the Economic Development Week and acknowledge the contributions made by professional economic developers to create more economically vibrant and livable communities, and to forge equitable paths to prosperity for all members of the community. And whereas, on May 12 through 18, 2024, we recognize National Police Week and honor the service and sacrifice of those law enforcement officers killed in the line of duty while protecting our communities and safeguarding our democracy. And
Whereas, on May 19 through 25, 2024, we honor EMS Week and acknowledge that emergency medical services is a vital public service, that access to quality emergency care dramatically improves survival and recovery rates for those suddenly ill or injured, and that emergency medical services fills an important gap in out-of-hospital care. And whereas, May 19 through 25, 2024, also marks the 64th Annual National Public Works Week, and reminds us that we are able to have clean water, safe streets, reliable infrastructure, and a livable community because of Public Works, and that Public Works employees have made a substantial contribution to protecting the health, safety, and quality of life for our residents. And
Now therefore, be it resolved that the Olympia City Council does hereby proclaim May 5 through the 11 as Public Service Recognition Week, May 5 through the 11 as Professional Municipal Clerk Week, May 6 through the 10 as Economic Development Week, May 12 through the 15 as National Police Week, May 19 through the 25 as EMS
EMS Week, and May 19th through the 25th as National Public Works Week. And the City of Olympia and urges all residents to consider how the work of Olympia's public servants improves their lives and to recognize the devotion, the sacrifice, and the commitment of the employees of the City of Olympia and the many other public servants who support us on the county, state, and federal levels. Signed in the City of Olympia, Washington, the 7th day of May 2024, Olympia City Council, Dante Payne, Mayor.
Okay, and I've got just a few individuals to come up and say a few remarks. So first, representing our clerk's office is Sean Creer, our city clerk.
Sean Creer, city clerk, pronouns he/him. I might have to keep this short, so for me, I'm just going to share some of the words of appreciation that the public have given to the city clerk team in the last year. I've never had a city respond faster to my public records requests. The personal call you made to me has left me feeling like a valued customer. The entire city clerk services team is always there for me. I always feel supported. Thank you so much. You are all so great to work with. It is a pleasure to work with you. Finally, I appreciate the attentiveness you give me in all of my requests. You are so customer-centric in everything you do. I only hear you described in the most glowing manner. You are loved by many here, by many here at the city, and you put your heart into all the work you do to serve the community. We appreciate you so much.
And now represent our Economic Development Team, our Economic Development Director,
Good evening, council. Mike Reed, he/him pronouns. I just wanted to let you know, I will actually be sharing sort of virtual bouquets out to my peers in this, as we discovered and really drove home over the COVID pandemic, that economic development is really a team sport in our community. We clearly understand that the economy does not care where our city boundary lines start and stop, nor does it care if you're in the private sector, public sector, or nonprofit sector. We found that everybody got hit hard during that period of time, and we bounded, we bound ourselves together to try to find solutions and paths forward to help our community out of that. So I do want to call out a couple of specific partners that we couldn't do our economic development work without. That would be our peers at Olympia, Lacey, Tumwater, we are Olympia, Lacey, Tumwater, and the county. Also, the Thurston Economic Development Council, the Thurston Chamber of Commerce, the Olympia Visitor Convention Bureau, and the Olympia Downtown Alliance, to name a few. Excuse me, also Enterprise for Equity is another great partner that we have. So as we're celebrating and recognizing Economic Development Week, I just wanted to take the opportunity to share some of our partners in that space. So thank you for the recognition.
And now representing our Police Department, Bill Smith, Police Guild President.
Thank you, City Manager and Council and Mayor. On behalf of the Police Department Officers Union, I'm Bill Smith, the president. I've been the president for many years now. On behalf of the union and the guild, I'd like to say thank you for the proclamation and the announcement that you've given, recognizing us. In the back of the room, you'll see quite a few officers wearing the badge there. What I can tell you is, working here long enough, that this group of members back here, through the last few years, we've had such a high turnover rate, but these men and women back here have been here constantly, no matter how many hours, leaving their families at home. And I'd like to recognize them for that, and they have served the city well and with dedication. I'd also like to recognize, you see a couple young gentlemen there in the blue uniforms? Those are part of our Police Explorer program. They are high school and college-age students who are volunteers here for the Police Department, learning about the job of law enforcement in between their time of going to school and in college. So I'd like to recognize them. Also, I would like to recognize you as a council. If you remember several weeks ago, I proposed a challenge to you to get to know us, and at the same time, I challenged our officers to get to know you. And by doing that, the easiest way is having you guys come out and do ride-alongs. Most of you have contacted me, or actually have come out in ride-alongs, including the City Manager. And we would just like to recognize you all for doing that. We are all representing the City of Olympia. We all work together. It's unfortunate sometimes, though, we don't know each other. And I think that's the best way, and that is my goal, is for the officers and the council to get to know each other. Thank you.
And to help us recognize EMS Week, Chief Matt Morris.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Matt Morris, your fire chief. I just want to say thank you for the recognition, and on behalf of all of the members of the Fire Department, we are just truly appreciative to be part of a great team, a great group of people that are really dedicated to taking care of this community, doing our best to fulfill your visions for the City of Olympia, and to meet our community's needs and exceed their expectations. It is an honor and a privilege to get to just simply take care of people and to try to do our best to make a difference in their lives. And so thank you for the recognition. We appreciate it. The members of the Fire Department will continue to serve with pride. So thank you.
And finally, recognizing National Public Works Week, our Public Works Director, Mark Russell, and Deputy Director, Ton Jeffers.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. For the record, I'm Mark Russell, Public Works Director, and it's a privilege to have Ton Jeffers, our Deputy Director, with me as well here tonight. First of all, on behalf of the department, thank you so much for the kind words and the proclamation. And I just want to take this opportunity to say what a talented team of public works professionals that I work with every day. They're dedicated, they're passionate about their work, and it is truly a privilege to lead this group. And I just want to acknowledge that this group of individuals provides foundational services for our community, providing critical infrastructure, maintaining that infrastructure, and making sure things like when you turn the water on at your home, that it actually does flow. So again, thank you very much for the acknowledgement. I appreciate it.
That is it. Thank you very much. We'd love to get a group photo, and this is going to be a good one because we've got a lot of employees here. So we'll see what we can do, and we're going to test Kelly's photo-taking ability. So all of you city employees, please come on all the way up to the front with the council.
Sure. I just want to announce, though, as you make your way to the front, after the photo, please don't leave. There might be some comments from the council afterwards.
Make sure you're all mixed in. You can't stand by someone in your office. You're upset, buddy, guys. What?
She's making sure I don't fall. I hate heights even this time. All right, everybody say Yarld Burger. All right, all at once, we're going to take a lot, because somebody's eyes are going to be closed. No, that's not going to work. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We got, we got more, we got more coming later on, too.
All right. Any comments from the dais? Councilmember Partially.
One, when you sit up here, and I've done this for a few years now, you realize that it's really not the work that we do up here that makes this city run. It's the work of all of the public servants that employ our policies, keep our people safe, our water safe. And I just, I want to extend my gratitude to all of you because I know that you make this city run. Believe me, I know. And sometimes I'm in awe of how much work you do to make our city one of the best in Washington, and definitely the best in Thurston County. I think I can say that. And I want to leave you with this. It's one of the whereases that I read because it really struck me. Whereas public servants make crucial contributions in every American community, reflect the full diversity of our nation, and deliver on the promise of a government for the people and by the people. And that's what you all stand for.
Mayor Protam Nguyen, followed by Councilmember Madron.
Thank you all for coming out and being here tonight with us. I'm sure many of you have already had full days, and you made the time to sit through those first proclamations and be here with us. So really appreciate it. And I see some familiar and then also new faces. I just wanted to recognize the incredible work of the executive team. I saw the schedule of many different touchpoints to connect with staff, to share some gratitude over breakfasts, multiple days this week, and then also lunch. And council also received that schedule. And so we look forward to seeing you and your peers out at one of those breakfast or lunch meetups. So thank you so much and hope to see you this week.
Councilmember Madron, followed by Councilmember Vanderpoel.
And speaking of the two proclamations that came before this, one thing that we heard from folks is that Olympia has felt very welcoming to them. And that's not just here in council chambers. You know, we have our public-facing employees, such as the Police Department, Fire Department, and others who are out there working with people in the community every day. But it's also really great to hear the feedback to the city clerk's office in terms of just the excellent customer service experience. And, you know, we can do our work up here on the council, and often we are the ones that are in the spotlight because, you know, the reporters are looking at us and people are looking at what we're saying up here. But it's you out there representing the community, representing the city to the community. And I just really want to thank you for doing that because you all are the ambassadors for the City of Olympia that help everybody feel super welcomed here. So thank you for that.
Councilmember Vanderpoel, followed by Councilmember Cooper.
From ride-alongs to policy discussions, we have the best public servants in I've ever seen. I mean, the amount of dedication that goes on every day, and the fact that you came after many of your shifts are over to come here to speak with us, meet with us, is wonderful. Thank you.
Councilmember Cooper.
Thank you, Mayor Payne. Thank you all so much for your service. I tell people again and again, and I'm sure many of you heard me say this, that Olympia is a world-class city because of all of you. All of these chairs have turned over twice in the 13 years that I've been here, yet we keep giving out 20-year, 25-year, 30-year service awards to the best public employees that exist anywhere. And we're just so lucky to have experts in all of your fields at the table in really hard times and in good times. And we wouldn't, we just literally would not be able to do anything without your dedicated service. So thank you for that, and thank you for being with us through thick and thin.
Yes. I just want to take a moment to acknowledge that you not only choose, you could work anywhere, but you choose to work for the City of Olympia. And we owe you our utmost gratitude for that decision. But besides that, not only do you choose the City of Olympia, but you choose your profession. You choose to do what you do. Some of you, you get up every day and you decide to come into this building. Some of you throw on a uniform. You decide to step into that uniform first before you come into this building. And that's really commendable. And there are a million and one reasons, especially in today's climate, why not to be in this line of work for any of us that are public servants. And yet, we choose to do it. And I think it's because of our shared love of humanity. And when I look out, I see all of you, and I'm looking at all of the diverse faces, and it makes me proud to sit here as the mayor of such a beautiful community with these wonderful colleagues who are very much in your debt as community members, but also as leaders of this city. So thank you so very much for the work that you do. And that includes our incredible executive staff as well, who leads this city so wonderfully in our stead as well. So thank you, and we are indebted to you as well. Thank you all very much, and happy Public Service Recognition Week and Month. Thank you. Okay, so that concludes our special recognition agenda items for this evening. So we will move on to public comment at this time. So I do believe we have a few people that are signed up here in the chambers. And do we have any online? Just all in chambers this evening. So before we begin, I know that there are a few new faces who are new to public comment. So you may notice that there is a clock to my right, your left here on this wall indicating your time. You have two minutes for your comments. You will speak here at this podium. The mic is on. You have your red, yellow, and green lights there. The green light indicating that your time has begun, your yellow light indicating that you have about 30 seconds remaining, and the red light indicates that your time has expired. If you do not finish your comments within allotted two minutes, feel free to email the remainder of your comments to us as well. And before we begin, I just want to remind everybody that we are in an election year and to please refrain from speaking in support or in opposition to a candidate or ballot measure, and please refrain from announcing or referring to any candidacy this evening. So with that, I'll turn it over to the Mayor Protam.
Thank you. So I'll go ahead and call a few names, just so that even if you're not up, you can kind of get ready and know that you're in the queue. So with that, first we have Valerie Hammett, followed by Rob Kirkwood, followed by Tracy And Valerie, if you're here, if you will just come to the podium.
I'm not sure what I'm supposed to do, and I'm very low vision. So I might read slowly if that's what I'm supposed to do, as just testimony about the traffic.
So, before we begin, I know that there are a few new faces who are new to public comment. So, you may notice that there is a clock to my right, your left here on this wall indicating your time. You have two minutes for your comments. You will speak here at this podium. The mic is on. You have your red, yellow, and green lights there. The green light indicating that your time has begun, your yellow light indicating that you have about 30 seconds remaining, and the red light indicates that your time has expired. If you do not finish your comments within allotted two minutes, feel free to email the remainder of your comments to us as well. And before we begin, I just want to remind everybody that we are in an election year and to please refrain from speaking in support or in opposition to a candidate or ballot measure. And please refrain from announcing or referring to any candidacy this, this evening. So, with that, I'll turn it over to the Mayor Protam.
Thank you. So, I'll go ahead and call a few names just so that even if you're not up, you can kind of get ready and know that you're in the queue. So, with that, first we have Valerie Hammett, followed by Rob Kirkwood, followed by Tracy Dorfeld. And Valerie, if you're here, if you will just come to the podium.
I'm not sure what I'm supposed to do. And I'm very low vision. So, I might read slowly if that's what I'm supposed to do, is just testimony about the traffic.
Yeah, go ahead.
In the neighborhood?
Yeah.
Okay. So, this is Capital Way, historic neighborhood in general, but Capital Way specifically. And there are two incidents that I just thought might be worth reporting. So, just a few weeks ago, I had to, I was crossing Capital at 18th. And I had to quickly move back to not be hit by a car on Capital Way. I was on a well-marked crosswalk on 18th. There were large signs north and south approaching this crosswalk, noting a need to stop for pedestrians crossing. And there were also wide, light, white lines. I don't know how recent they were, but they were not old paint. It was just so well-marked in so many ways, but I still had to step back not to get hit. The other one is just in general, it seems really dangerous to go the speed limit on Capital Way as people behind me get angry and they just jackrabbit around, just really recklessly. You know, sometimes giving you a nice hand language and speeding up. And it seems to me in general that the speeding, speeding definitely is the norm on Capital Way, way more than the 25. It's rare, I think. And I catch myself going 30. And if I slow down, that's when I get angry people behind me. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. When you're ready, Rob.
I'm Rob Kirkwood. My wife Valerie and I live at 215 Maple Park Avenue. Our grandkids also live there on occasion. And I'm frequently on Capital Way buzzing to and from the Tumwater Safeway. And as Valerie says, I probably frequently exceed the speed limit myself. And we get this, if you, even at that, exceeding the speed limit, we get the, as Valerie said, the hand motions and the people tailgating, people doing sort of jackrabbit passes. So, something needs to be done to slow traffic down. And as soon as you get done with Capital Way, I'd like you to work on Maple Park Avenue as well because people are frequently driving too fast on that road as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Tracy Dorfeld, followed by Gerald Apple, followed by Helen Johnston.
I'm going to break up the stories a little bit. And I'm a person of data background. And so, I did provide a handout. On the months of August and September, we, for a few weeks as stated, between 8/5/23 and 8, and 9/9/23, the city of Olympia graciously provided some measurement of what was actually going on. And Jerry and I, we also did some speed sign work. This is not in the written report. And it was funny, some people, as they approached the visible sign, sped up. Many of them slowed down. It was interesting because we were recording who was who. We enjoyed a lot of cooperation, by the way, from the city and the police. And it's much appreciated. As you'll see in the data section, the data was requested directly from the city police and promptly provided. And I provided some analysis that was made in October of 2023. What does it say? Some of the most interesting data points are over 1,000 times a day, vehicles exceed 35 miles per hour, 1,000 times a day, not a week, not a month, a day in our 25 mile an hour residential neighborhood. Between 7:00 AM and 8:00 PM every day, vehicles exceed 50 miles per hour four times a day. That's double the speed limit four times a day consistently, without, without laps. The more interesting one, that's maybe a bit trivial depending on if you're in front of the car or not, is on average, a vehicle will exceed 80 miles per hour once a week. Geez, all right. The rest is in writing and I'll send it to you. But when I've presented this data, the biggest question I have is where does the city's liability lie now that you know? We're also going to be a solutions-oriented group and present next month some of the ideas we've come up with for consideration and why with some of the backup data. So, thank you for what you're doing. We can count on you to fix it.
Thank you. Go ahead, Gerald.
Hi. My name is Gerald Apple. And I'm the Vice President of our South Capital Neighborhood Association. And I want to thank the city council and our mayor. I appreciate you listening to our concerns. Thank you so much. I would like to read a couple of comments by one of our citizens who lives in the South Capital Neighborhood. And his name is Andy Meyer. So, let me go ahead and read that. "I've encountered many situations on Capital due to the excessive speed. Two issues stand out. One, pedestrian safety is threatened by excessive speed. I've had to move rapidly out of the way of a speeding vehicle when I start to cross the Capital Way at a crossing, but realize during mid-crossing that the car is approaching way too fast. What about a child who isn't watching carefully coupled with that distracted driver? The second thing, I've had several situations recently with vehicles following me at excessive speed, almost colliding with my vehicle or others around me as I slowed down to make a turn off of Capital. My suggestions, speed bumps at key pedestrian crossings and changing the signal system on 20th, just stop cars periodically." And this was written by Andy Meyer. And thank you so much for listening to me. Okay.
Thank you. Next, we'll call up Helen Johnston, followed by, oh, we have a duo. Or if you'd like to do it separately, that's all right as well. But we have Oscar and Barbara Sewell.
Hi. Thank you for listening to me. Jerry and I live at 1803 Capital Way South. And we're frequently awakened in the middle of the night by speeding cars. I think they're racing each other. And I, we contacted Marcella Abadi, the principal of Lincoln School, to see if the children who are going to school are affected at all. And apparently, the crossing guard that, that is right there at 20th at the Frog Pond does a good enough job of alerting the traffic that children are crossing. So, that's not an issue. But I do volunteer. I'm a retired teacher and I volunteer over at Lincoln. And I have seen children, you know, with the orange flags crossing. And that, that seems to, to help. But I think we need to do more on Capital Way. Thank you for listening.
Good afternoon, Mayor Payne and councilmembers. Thank you for inviting us to present. My name is Barbara Sewell. I live at 2602 South Capital Way in the home we have resided in for 46 years and love very much. In the 1980s and 90s, we have had, there were two incidents where southbound cars ran into the brick wall at the back of our yard and destroyed a third of it each time, and we rebuilt it. Following these incidents, there have been dozens of accidents. And the city first put in the guardrail and then extended it west to the corner of Capital Way and Capital Boulevard. The frequency and severity of accidents have increased. Vehicles bounce off the guardrail across the street into neighbors' yards. They end up on top of the guardrail, or sometimes they come inside the guardrail onto our property. And the lamppost at the corner has been knocked down many times. About 20 months ago, a vehicle driven by an uninsured drunk driver entered our property late at night, threading its way into our living room. The, I wish I had a picture for you because it looked like a bomb went off in our living room and generally acknowledged that if we had been sitting in that room, we would certainly not be standing here today. We put boulders in our yard for protection. And another accident occurred four months later. Same thing, but the boulders did their job, thank heavens, and stopped it. So, we have put in $5,000 of our personal money for, to enhance our protection. There, well, there's, there's a lot more on the handout that I gave you. But I just want to say that we are, thank you for allowing us to present our concerns. And we fervently hope that the council will give serious consideration to these issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Oscar Sewell, followed by John, John Saunders.
Thank you very much. Earlier, Jay Bernie mentioned civil servants often work under difficult and dangerous conditions. As my wife just mentioned, twice in the past two years, we have been recipients of this service. It's my hope that a plan can be developed to remove and reduce danger before it occurs as compared to waiting until after it occurs. Thank you.
Thank you. After John will be Jesse Goth, followed by Carrie Ritz.
Thank you, Mayor Payne and, and city council for hearing our concerns about the traffic speed on Capital Way. I'd just like to use my time to read a statement that I have from one of my neighbors, BG Sandall. BG lives with her family at 17th and Capital Way on the east side. And her statement says, "We live on Capital Boulevard and 17th Street. A number of years ago, a person was speeding down Capital Way, turned onto 17th, jumped the curb, and slammed into a tree on our parking strip. By hitting the tree, it kept the car from ramming into our kitchen. My husband ran out to see if the guy was okay and asked if the guy thought he might have been going a little too fast. I am also a cyclist. If I am hit by a vehicle going 25 miles per hour, I could possibly survive. If I am hit by a vehicle going 35, chances are I won't. There are mountains of data supporting those numbers. In order to go south on Capital Way, you have to ride on horrible, narrow bike lanes where the surface is cracked, pitted, and frankly, just dangerous, particularly by spuds, vics, and Oley roasters. Years ago, a solution was posed and denied by the city to create one lane going in each direction with safe bike lanes and a center turn lane on Capital Way. It is such a simple solution. And again, thank you for hearing our concerns tonight."
Good evening. I'm Jesse Goth. Thank you for listening to our concerns tonight. My wife and I moved into our residence at 2541 Capital Way South two years ago. We're neighbors of the Sewells. And after we moved in, the prior owner, our mail carriers, and other neighbors warned us not to let our young children play in the front yard because of the dangerous conditions caused by speeding on Capital Way. Frankly, we thought they were exaggerating, but we were shocked just of what we've seen in the two years we've lived there. We have observed five single-car accidents just in the stretch of Capital Way in front of our house in that two years. The worst two, of course, were what the Sewells described. We've, there's been damage to city property. There's been personal damage done, property damage done. And because of that, we did contact the city and spoke at length with the Department of Transportation and were provided lengthy data of what they saw with the speeding issues. And they acknowledged the speeding concerns on Capital Way South, but let us know that frankly, there were greater priorities within the community to address with the funding. My point tonight, I think, is just that it's a significant safety concern for all families, young and old, that live on the, along this route. As a 20-year federal government employee, I know there's always competing priorities and there's limited funding and budgets. But I think the creative minds in this room and in the community can find effective solutions to this safety concern. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Carrie Ritz, followed by Justin Russell, and then finally, Marty Kenny.
Hi. I'm, just wanted to share my story. I am, this is about septic rules here in Olympia. So, I own my house and the vacant lot next to it. I live in a 1,200 square foot house built in 1977. And as I get closer to retirement, I realize it's too big for me. It's already too big for me. And it's too much for me to keep up. So, I would like to sell and put my affordable house on the market and build a small house, 500 square foot, on the lot next to it that I own. But I've reached a barrier that my lot is too small for a septic system based on the current rules. And bringing in sewer, which is over 700 feet away, I wouldn't be able to afford that. So, I, I can't build effectively on my lot. And I have, I've been working with Justin, who has more information about my situation.
Hi. My name is Justin. I'm a septic designer in Thurston County. I apologize ahead of time for the lack of enough handouts. I'm used to dealing with the Thurston County commissioners, and there's not as many of them. My favorite thing in the world is public speaking, so I'll make it short. Hi. City of Olympia rules, and I gave you guys a handout and a lot I did in Rochester just recently. City of Olympia rules limit the size of a property that you can put a septic system on to one acre. So, if you don't have an acre, you can't build a home. Well, we can go down the matrix that's here and we can get down to 12,500 square feet. Carrie's lot is under 12,500 square feet. It's about 5,400 square feet. This lot I did in the city of Rochester, as you can see, it is 2,650 square feet. I'm looking to work with somebody to see if we can get an exception to this. I've spoken to three different sewer contractors. And to bring sewer down the road 710 feet, it'd be between $350,000 to $400,000 for her to build a 400-square-foot home. It just isn't feasible to spend that kind of money, plus engineering, plus surveyors, to make small, affordable homes on these small lots that are still left in the city of Olympia that were platted over about 100 years ago. There, I will send more to the council. And it will include this and it will include some other stuff I've done on small lots like this. But I appreciate, you know, the help in moving forward with something like this for someone who could put her home on the market, make more available home in the, in this area. And she wants to stay in the area. So, her other option would possibly be to move out of the city of Olympia, which I know she does not want to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we move on to the next public commenter, our Public Works Director, Mark Russell, is here in the back here. So, if you could connect, that would be great.
Thank you, Mayor. And the next and final public commenter is Marty Kenny.
Hello, Mayor and council. My name's Marty Kenny. And I am a developer in the city. And I'm very curious about our potentials of doing neighborhood-centered zoning and creating wonderful spaces in the city. We live in a wonderful place where the citizens seem to want to be involved in the growth of their city. And I'm finding, I'm hearing stories that our municipal code is stopping much of the development in areas like San Francisco Street Bakery and the Puget Handy Pantry. So, I am encouraging the city council to consider ways that we can create easier rezoning for places that it only makes sense to do residential-commercial development. And it really seems like the only reason we're not making progress in the neighborhood center concept is that the municipal code is this heavy book that is being thrown at it. So, I encourage you all to work together to figure out how we can make this easier. Thank you.
Does that conclude public comment? All right. Okay. So, that concludes our public comment for this evening. But before we move on, I'd like to turn it over for some comments from council, beginning with Councilmember Vanderpoel.
On the cap, on the traffic on Capital Way, I'm becoming more and more aware of speeding problems around the city in the last few months since I've been on council. It seems like that comes up quite often all over the city. It seems like that comes up quite often all over the city. You know, i- if you get hit by a car going, and the car's going 20 miles per hour, your, your chances are, I think the chances of not getting a fatality is like 10%. But when it goes up to 30 miles per hour, it's 80%. And so it increases dramatically the further you go. And so I'm all about ways we can try to get speed bumps, the ways we can get raised crossings, ways we can do that narrowing process. You know, the planners are gonna tell me that we need to do things through the transportation master plan, but I do believe that we can try to find ways to do this more cost-effective in a way. We, I don't, to be honest, I don't think we need to do a traffic study to be able to know where the problem is, if you ask me personally. There may be state rules that, that keep me from, from, us from doing that, but I believe that we should be able to, to meet these needs as they occur. Beyond that, thank you, Marty, for coming out, and I just had coffee with you about this, so I appreciate you making comment on, on the need for the neighborhood centers. It's, it's good to see, have you comment on that. And on the septic, I really think that, I appreciate you coming out and talking about that because we need to know where the things are, we need to change our zoning, and when people come and let us know what needs to be changed, particularly even the smallest things, it helps us a lot. So thank you all for coming.
Councilmember Madron, followed by Councilmember Partially.
Yeah, I want to thank everybody from the South Capitol Neighborhood for coming out and sharing your concerns with us. And one thing I'd like to encourage is a meeting with the, with the neighbors in the South Capitol Neighborhood, with some of our city staff, potentially the police department and transportation folks in Public Works. You know, we had folks, a series of commenters several months ago that had challenges with racing down their street. And I know that we had city staff meet with them to work with them to find some solutions. And especially as you all are developing solutions for us to consider, it'd be great if we did that together, because, you know, some of the ideas like speed bumps, that can be a challenge when, say, you know, somebody's house is on fire and the fire truck needs to get down as quickly as possible. So there's some, you know, there, there's a lot of nuance to this, but also, it's, it's also very simple, that there are challenges on Capitol Way and that they need to be addressed. So we, I do want to note that a couple of things that have happened recently, a few months ago, we passed a transportation benefit district sales tax to help with multimodal transportation that can help with things like pedestrian infrastructure, bike infrastructure. So there are more resources around for that. There, again, are a lot of demands on those resources still. There's never enough transportation dollars out there, but there are more resources that, that we've made available. Also, another challenge with this is, you know, enforcement. And with the public safety tax that was approved by voters, we, we just did a staffing study with our police department. We just had a study session on it, and we are looking at how we can increase staffing in the police department to have more, and part of that is traffic patrol. So, so there are, there are a couple of things that are in the works, just, just so you all know, but I think that, and also, I've ridden, I've ridden my bike down Capitol so, so many times, and like, it is, it is not a pleasant experience, even when there's no other cars on there. The bike lanes are like, they're cracked, the sewer grates are like really uncomfortable to ride over, so like, you know, there are some legitimate concerns there. And I, I didn't get to see your living room, Barb, after the aftermath of the crash, but I did get to see it when it was being rebuilt. And, you know, that must have been like a really scary experience to have that happen in your home, and then like to not be able to fully use your home for so long. So thanks for coming and sharing that with, with the council. In terms of the, the septic issue, septic issues in urban areas, oh, they're such a challenge. And I, I wonder what, you know, I want to learn more about, about the specific challenge on this site, and I also wonder what other types of creative solutions there might be if, if there is ultimately a roadblock around it. One potential thing is combining the two lots and building an accessory dwelling unit that could connect to the existing sewer on there to be able to build a smaller housing unit, just thinking out loud here. But that's, that's potentially something that could happen. But I want to learn more about this challenge that you're facing and see what we could do. And neighborhood centers, yay, thanks for coming and talking about neighborhood centers. We recently went through that at the land use committee, and that will be coming to the full council soon to give direction to staff on how we do want to change the zoning code, because it's, it's not enough to say, hey, we want a neighborhood center there. We also need to enable it. And so thanks for coming and speaking on that.
Councilmember Partially.
I'm not sure I can add much from Councilmember Madron and Vanderpool, except for to say that I'm a fan, and will always be a fan, of taking out one of our lanes on our one-way streets downtown Capitol Way, because we know that shuts down the high-speed traffic. And people that are using these roads as freeways to get from one place to another but never stopping along them, will find a different way to go. And that's what traffic studies show. And I think a traffic engineer told me, "Traffic's like water. You shut down one area, people will find a different route." I love the idea, because I'm also, I've just gotten an e-bike, and I love my e-bike, but I'm remembering why it's can be terrifying to be on the road. And I have ridden up Capitol Way recently with it. I think a active transport, transportation, one lane going each direction on Capitol Way would, would slow things down. I think we should look at this. I think we should slow the traffic down by taking out lanes. And the city managers heard me say that for six years, and I will continue to say it because we want people to slow down, we want people to use alternative transportation, but if they're afraid to, they're not going to. So that's just a simple, simple fact. And most cities that have done that around Europe have actually found that their neighborhoods and their downtowns are activated, not the reverse, which a lot of people will put fear, if you shut down a lane, people aren't going to come downtown or they're not going to go up Capitol Way. That's not true. It's absolutely not true. You get out of the car more. As far as neighborhood centers go, not only is land use in our group looking at this, but the Thurston Collaborative, Climate Collaborative Steering Committee is considering potentially, one of our regional initiatives would be to look at, can we make a coordinated plan for densifying community, our communities, as well as making sure that our community centers aren't right on top of each other and be more strategic in our planning? So I'm right on board with that. The best thing we can do as a community is densify. ICLI, the International Climate Group, has said that we need to densify our cities, not just Olympia, Tomater, and Lacey.
Any other comments from the deists? So, well, first, I just want to say, beginning with the, the septic public commenter, I, I'm also open to learning. I'm not sure why the code specifically states or sets the threshold at a particular level for square footage and things of that nature. I'm sure there's a reason for it. I don't want to assume that it's arbitrary. And so as Councilmember Madron said, we're certainly interested in learning, and I think you hear from the deists that there's some support for that, to continue to look into that issue and see what we can do to address that concern. So many of you know that back in, I believe, March it was, I came to speak with you all at your, your board meeting in regards to the speeding that's happening in the South Capitol Neighborhood along Capitol Way. And that was a very robust discussion, I think, which ultimately resulted really in why you're, you're here tonight. And, and what I'm hearing is, is that you, you have some additional solutions that you're exploring and that you'll be coming back to us with those solutions, and be very interested in hearing what they are. I am inclined to agree with my colleague here, Councilmember Vanderpool, who said that I don't know about looking into this and studying this. You know, I think if you live in this community and you have ever been on Capitol Way, you know that this is a problem. It's, it's not something that I think needs to be further and further explored, except to the extent as to looking into what best solutions there are to address it, in my opinion. And so obviously, we heard a few ways to do that, like maybe it's perhaps narrowing the number of lanes. I'm actually thinking that it's probably not one solution. I'm thinking it's probably a mixed bag of various things, signage, fluorescents, maybe it is a shrinking the lanes. But I don't want to commit to how we're going to do that tonight. I think we need to be all open-minded as to how we might approach this. We know that it's a problem. I've been saying that's a problem, I've experienced it myself, especially if you've, if you frequent the, the area, as I tend to do. And so I just want to thank you all for your patience, and this is something that I do feel is urgent, because it's, it's one of those things that, that if we, if we don't do something very quickly, something very terrible could happen. And, and you all will be here to say that we told you so. So we want to make sure that we do something as soon as we can to address your concerns, and just appreciate you being here tonight, and we look forward to you coming back next month with the solutions you want to propose to us. Any additional comments? Councilmember Madron.
So I just had another thought pop into my head in terms of something I wanted to say. In terms, in terms of the septic issue, I just want to thank you for thinking about how you could downsize your living situation and make another housing avail, option available to somebody else. We just met with the school district last Thursday, and there, there needs to be more housing available, family-sized housing available for families. And so I just want to recognize that you're, you're looking at how you can be a part of the solution by downsizing your own situation and making the home you're in right now available for somebody else. So just wanted to recognize that.
All right. So with that, we will move on to adoption of this consent calendar. But before we do, we have a few pools this evening, items 4C, 4D through F, and 4G and 4L. But I will begin with speaking to 4C, which is the, excuse me, approval of the resolution appointing Erin Clicka to serve on the Independent Salary Commission. And I do want to point out that our candidate for this appointment is here in the chambers this evening, Erin. Thank you for being here. But I did just want to provide a bit of background and context. So last year, Councilmember Madron introduced a referral to have us take a look at our current practices as it pertains to the Independent Salary Commission and how we conduct the appointment process of members in, when there is a vacancy. And council spoke, and we felt that it was certainly necessary to apply more of an equitable approach to how we appoint members to, to the Independent Salary Commission. And so out of that referral, this process came about, where we've tried it for the first time, which was really for, state law gives the mayor the authority to nominate a appointee to the commission and for the council to rather support or oppose that via their vote. And before it was, there was sort of, you know, the mayor would just submit a name, and we decided to take a, a different approach, which is to make it a bit, a little bit more inclusive, since the council is ultimately voting and making the final decision, to include them in the nomination process as one of the ways to make it a bit more equitable and to take that approach, as I said. And so this time around, I received five nominations from three members of our council. And so I want to thank all of the members that submitted names, and this is just the start of a fairly newer process that we're beginning with this. And also, just, there are other ways that we are looking at exploring to make the Independent Salary Commission a bit more equitable and accessible to average community members, and that is the idea. And so we wanted to apply all of our equity values in our framework that we use here at the city and apply that to the work that we do at the Independent Salary Commission. And so I just wanted to, again, recognize Erin Clicka and thank her so much for her willingness to serve on, on this commission. It's a very important one. You have an incredible and extensive background, professional background at the Department of Financial Institutions as their Director of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion. And you certainly, that background and experience is very much applicable to the work of the Independent Salary Commission. And so very much looking forward to your service. And I'm happy to turn it over to the council if you have any questions in this regard. Mayor Protem Nguyen.
Yeah, I just want to lift up the mayor for embracing this new process. And so I, and sending quite a few follow-up reminders that we could get our nominations in, yes. I'm really, really excited about Erin choosing to join us, well, sort of, joined the city of Olympia via the Salary Commission. Like Mayor Payne was saying, you just bring such a, such a great background, and we probably don't even have time to cover all of the things, but some, some things that I know to be true about you is your, not only just in your role, but your heart for, for equity work, and it's been that way before it was popular, and before it was on everyone's minds. And, and you are someone that really not only cares, but really sees processes through to the end. And that is something that's always been really respected about you in state government, and you're, you're well-researched, and you're, and you hold steady with your, your opinions on things. And that's probably why you're working at Department of Financial Institutions on, on such a hairy topic, which is closing with the wealth gap. So between the equity work and then your background with, with all things finance, I believe you're also a CPA, is that correct? Yes, that's right, you have a background in accounting, so, and, and you're an Olympian, and I couldn't think of a, a more perfect fit. So thank you so much for choosing to, to serve and to lend your talents to us.
Yeah, and I'll just, Councilmember Madron.
Well, I also wanted to thank you, Mayor Payne, for being very thoughtful about this process, but also thank the Community Livability and Public Safety Committee that, that took the referral that, that we put forward to them to kind of rethink how we do the Salary Commission. And I want to thank Erica for being willing to, to step into this role, and thanks for being here tonight, too. And also, it's great that we have our new HR director in the back, because he can hear us talk about all of this and know the significance of it, and he, he'll, he'll be supporting, he'll be supporting that process. So, yeah, it's great, we got, we got the whole team here. Well, I mean, there's other Salary Commission members, too, that aren't here, but, you know.
Mayor Protem.
Thank you. And Councilmember Madron, I say this in public because I know that you would appreciate it. You are a person that respects people and is also very literal and wants to get things correct. It's Erin Clicka.
Sorry. I was getting the, the letters of your two names mixed up, so, thank you, Erin.
Yeah, I'll just add how incredibly responsive you are, too. You got a cold call from me on a random day, and you answered, and it was just like smooth sailing from there. So that speaks already, I think, to how, what you'll be like in, in your time on our commission. So again, thank you. All right, so we have items 4D through F, and I believe we have Jacinda Stilches here to speak to those items this evening. They are 4D, an approval of a resolution authorizing the execution of a multifamily tax exemption agreement between the city of Olympia and Urban Olympia 11 Alpha LLC. We have 4ECHO, which is the approval of a resolution authorizing the execution of a multifamily tax exemption agreement between the city of Olympia and Urban Olympia 12 LLC for an affordable housing development project. And 4F, an approval of a resolution authorizing the execution of an eight-year multifamily tax exemption agreement between the city of Olympia and Urban Olympia 10 Alpha LLC. Hi, Jacinda. Hi, Justinda. We hear you. I'm not sure if your mic is on.
Okay, there we go. There we go. Thank you. Thank you all. Okay, um, thank you, mayor, for, for reading those in order. Um, they're all very similar. Um, so I will start with, um, and I am sick. I apologize. Uh, Justinda Stelchus, I work in our Housing Division, or, um, I am our Affordable Housing Program Manager. Um, so item D, uh, this, as you mentioned, is a multifamily tax exemption agreement between, uh, the City and Urban Olympia 11A. This is for a project occurring at 505 Legion Way. Uh, this is fifty-seven market rate, um, excuse me, units. And I do want to call attention, sorry, I do want to call attention to the fact that, um, even though we are in May, this is an application that came in, in late 2023. Um, I'm sure you are all aware, but for the public's, um, information, uh, we had some changes to our MFT program that took, uh, took effect at the beginning of this year in January. Um, so this application is for an eight-year MFT, um, exemption, uh, again, market rate. They came in last year, so it is not applicable to the new, um, 2024, um, code. Um, and I wanted to, to call that out and make sure that everyone is aware. So the new code calls for the fee in lieu of, um, excuse me, of creating affordable units. Um, with this application coming in late last year, the fee in lieu does not apply. Um, so again, it's fifty-seven market rate units, uh, studios and one-bedroom units at 505 Legion Way. Uh, the rents have not been set at those yet, um, so I can't share that with you, but they are market rate. Um, and I will pause before I move on to item E, if you all had any questions about that one, item D. Uh, so item E is also a multifamily tax exemption, um, agreement. This one is with Urban Olympia 12. Uh, this is a 12-year, so this is the affordable, um, MFT. This one did come in recently, um, but just as a, uh, reminder, this is property that the city, um, entered into a purchase and sale agreement with, uh, the developer to develop the property. That purchase and sale agreement was executed in May of 2021, and within that agreement, there's specific language that calls out sixty percent of the units will be affordable to eighty percent and below, um, area median income households. And it also says within that, uh, purchase and sale agreement specifically calls out that, um, the project will apply for the 12-year MFT. So again, um, considering the new changes to the MFT, our new code, our new, uh, code and the new program calls for one hundred percent affordable. Um, this one is not one hundred percent affordable. This one is sixty percent of the units are affordable. Um, so that's forty-eight of the, uh, units are affordable, and then the remaining eighteen are market rate. And again, that is because of that specific language in the real estate purchase and sale agreement. Um, this one, uh, excuse me, this is located at 306 Fourth Avenue. Um, and this is, um, again, thirty units of affordable, eighteen market rate. The affordable units are studios and one-bedrooms. Um, studios renting around thirteen hundred, and the one-bedrooms around sixteen hundred. And then again, the market rate units, which I don't have, um, rental data on those ones, and that is a 12-year, again, MFT. Uh, any questions on that one? Okay. Uh, so the last one, um, again, a multifamily tax exemption agreement. This is another eight-year, um, another one, uh, with Urban Olympia. So this is for 401 Union Avenue. This is seventy units, all market rate. Um, this is another one that came in late last year. Um, so the fee in lieu doesn't apply, so that's not, so you're not seeing the fee in lieu, and that's why. Um, and I, I, I don't have, uh, rental rates for that one either, um, but it is an eight-year and available for any questions if you all have them.
Thank you very much, Justinda. I hope you get to go home now and take care of yourself.
Thank you.
Yes. Have a good night. Thank you. All right. Um, so we also have, um, item four G, uh, as a requested pool from councilmember Vanderpool, which is approval of a resolution authorizing an agreement between the Cities of Olympia, Lacey, Tomwater, and Yelm to complete a joint housing displacement analysis. Uh, and I hear, I have, um, Anastasia Everett here to speak to that. Or, I'm sorry.
I'll state my name for the record anyway, so, okay. Uh, so good evening, Mayor Payne and councilmembers. Um, thank you. My name is Krista Lenson. I'm a Housing Program Specialist at the City. Uh, she/her pronouns. Um, so before you tonight, it's a memorandum of understanding between the Cities of Lacey, Olympia, Tomwater, and Yelm. Um, and this will allow us to jointly hire a consultant to perform a displacement analysis and racially disparate impacts analysis, um, as a part of our comprehensive plan update. Um, so after signing the MOU tonight, um, that will, um, be signed by all the other cities who are in partnership, um, and then the City of Olympia will be the contract lead, and that will authorize us to sign a contract with our consultant, um, which is BDS Planning and Urban Design. Um, and so this analysis will, um, help us to, um, update the housing element of our comprehensive plan, and these, um, new requirements are, um, under state law, um, to ensure that our future, um, planning for our future growth, um, addresses the needs of people at all income levels and doesn't cause further harm to communities who might have been impacted by, um, previous policies that caused displacement or impacts, um, to those community members. Um, so this just helps us to go forward with our planning in a more equitable way. And I'm happy to answer any additional questions.
Thank you, Krista. Yes, and I do know your name. However, my mic seems to be cutting on and off without me pushing it, so, uh, we might just want to do a tech check after tonight's meeting, just to see what's going on with that. I'm not sure why it's powering on when I'm not touching it. Um, so just watch your mics. Um, so any, uh, questions for Krista from Davis? All right. Well, thank you so much, Krista. All right. And we also have, uh, item four L, which is approval of a resolution authorizing a right-of-way use agreement between the City of Olympia and Oyster Boys LLC Doing Business as King Solomon's Reef. Uh, and here to speak to this item is, uh, Mike Reed, our Economic Development Director.
Well, good evening, council, again, for the record, Mike Reed, Economic Development Director. Uh, this is actually, uh, to a degree, a renewal of an existing, um, uh, right-of-way use agreement that we had. As you know, uh, one of the unfortunate casualties that we had was a longstanding business downtown, The Reef, that was adored by many, uh, unfortunately closed, uh, shortly after the, the pandemic. And we are now seeing a new business entering into that space, and they would like to use the alley that is adjacent. This alley usage is something that we are very supportive of here, both from an economic development standpoint. It allows our businesses to take advantage of, uh, having an outdoor, uh, potential presence, but also our clean team, our walking patrol, and our walking crisis response units. Sometimes alleys in our downtown core can be areas of high maintenance and public safety concern. Uh, so having the opportunity to have a business take advantage of those locations for our, for, for the community benefit actually has a lot of goal alignment for us. So this, uh, this deal puts, um, puts those pieces in place for, uh, the allowed use there. It's a four-year term on that. We can still access the right-of-way, uh, for utility, maintenance, and other purposes like that. So we're actually looking for more alleys that we could encourage businesses to take this on and, and, uh, bring that sort of outdoor presence as well. So happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Mike. Councilmember Cooper.
Thank you, Mayor Payne. Thanks, Mike, for giving that recap. If, uh, if a downtown business owner wanted to enter into this program, uh, i- is there some rules published somewhere, or they just call you and start talking about their ideas?
The best way is they would go to our website. Well, they can always just call me, or they come to the second-floor permit counter. There is also, uh, on our website, uh, it's pedestrian interference is the typical term that we use that for, for the kind of permit that you get. We have three ways of doing a per, uh, pedestrian interference. One is, remember those blue stickers that you would see on the sidewalks around? So that's one way. Another way is when you see like an al, like the, the, um, sort of railings in front of businesses, like we see one over at Well 80. That's another kind. Or what we call this clean alley credit, or clean alley program is the third of those various pedestrian improvements. They are all on the website so that you can access and understand what those are. Easiest way, though, is probably just to come to our permit counter, uh, and, and talk to one of our permit specialists.
Awesome. Thank you, Mike.
Yep. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Any other questions? All right. Seeing none, that concludes our, uh, pools. Any additional items to pull for comment? All right. So with that, I need a motion to adopt this evening's consent calendar.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor of adopting this consent calendar signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Uh, congratulations to our new Independent Salary Commissioner, Erin Klicka. Uh, and Erin, I'm not sure if you had an opportunity to meet our Assistant City Manager, Debbie Sullivan, who's heading, uh, all things Independent Salary Commission. So if you can connect before she goes, that'd be great. Have a good night. Thank you for being here. All right. So that concludes, um, the consent calendar. We'll move on to, uh, other business item this evening, which is item six A, which is the 2024 Legislative Session wrap-up. Um, and here to, to kick us off is, uh, Susan Grisham, our Assistant City Manager. Uh, Susan. Oh, I'm sorry. Assistant to the City Manager. Yes.
Yeah. We, we, yeah. Good evening, uh, for the record. I am Susan Grisham here tonight as your legislative liaison. Um, I'm here with our contract lobbyist, Deborah Mengia, who's going to do, um, most of this presentation, and she is going to give an overview of this past legislative session, uh, the supplemental budgets, um, how we fare with our city legislative priorities this year, um, a preview of 2024 elections, and looking ahead and, and next steps. And then I will hop back up here, um, to get some preliminary thoughts on what you guys are thinking for our 2025 legislative agenda. Um, and with that, I will turn it over to Deborah.
Good evening, mayor. Mayor Protem, councilmembers. I'm Deborah Mengia. I am your state lobbyist, and I'm going to give you, as Susan said, just a real quick overview of what happened during the legislative session and, and, uh, talk about the city's priorities and how you did, and then we'll start looking ahead to 2025. So as you know, uh, oh. As you know, it was a short sixty-day supplemental, um, budget session, and, um, this session was a little different than other supplementals. Well, the last supplemental before this one, the legislature had a lot of COVID money, a lot of federal money, and they had to figure out where they were going to put it. That wasn't the case with this supplemental. Um, they had, um, good revenue on the operating side. The capital budget was pretty skinny because they appropriated most of that in the first year of the biennium. And then the transportation budget is, it's in, it's in, it's going to need some help, and we'll talk a little bit more about that. Um, Democrats still have a strong majority in the House and the Senate. And another thing that made this session, um, unique and different were the six initiatives that were delivered to the legislature. They spent a lot of time trying to figure out how they were going to deal with those initiatives, and in the end, what they did was they passed three of them, and three of them will be on the ballot in November. And I think that, um, depending on what happens in November with those three initiatives, especially repealing the Climate Commitment Act and the capital gains tax could have a huge impact on legislative deliberations for next year on the biennial budget. There is, um, an awful lot of money, um, a billion dollars in capital gains tax revenue that goes to schools, education, childcare, things like that. And then the Climate Commitment Act money is in all three of the budgets. In fact, the transportation budget, when the legislature passed the Move Ahead Package, um, about a year or so ago, they put, they estimated sixteen billion from, um, Climate Commitment Act revenues over a sixteen-year period for transportation. So if that is repealed, um, there's going to be, there's going to be a lot of reconfiguring of what the priorities are and where spending will happen. And then they had a lot of policy issues that they dealt with as well. They, there were a lot of housing bills, a lot of climate bills, um, issues relating to behavioral health, substance use, disorder, things like that. Um, so just real quickly, I'm not going to go through all of these bullet points, but, um, these are some of the highlights of the operating, um, budget, the supplemental budget. You can see where they, they put big chunks of money into these, um, various categories. And they added three billion in total funding. On the capital budget, it was a one-point-three-billion-dollar capital budget. Again, these are some of the highlights, no new diversions, um, from the Public Works Assistance Account. An additional one-hundred-and-twenty-seven million went into the Housing Trust Fund, so that was historic. Um, a lot of the, the money in the capital budget went into climate programs. But what, what's, needs to be noted is that the majority of the appropriations in the capital budget from the Climate Commitment Act, um, are assumed to be effective on January first. And if the initiative passes, those appropriations go away. So a lot of these things, um, the fish barrier removal, a lot of these things, um, those, those additional appropriations will go away if that initiative passes. On the transportation budget, um, there's really no new additional money for the transportation budget, and when the legislature passed the transportation budget, they only looked out just a couple of years in terms of the, the programs that they were going to be funding. That's important to the city because the city, um, got a, a project included in the Move Ahead Package, um, on 101, and it was slated for future appropriation. We're still in the future appropriation bucket, but again, we'll have to wait and see, um, what happens with state revenues and see how they're going to be dealing with a lot of the, the projects. And a lot of the projects that they had already, were already ongoing, um, had major cost overruns, and so that took, as you can see, three-hundred-and-twenty-six million additional to just address some of those, um, cost overruns. But public safety was a, an important theme for the transportation budget, um, and so they're really looking at things like, um, traffic safety cameras and things like that. And they put a lot of money into ferries and, and electrification and, um, also into, um, safe routes to school, which, by the way, application cycle is open now on that, um, through the Department of Transportation. So the city had its, its, uh, 2024 legislative priorities. You had tax reform, you had housing and community livability, you had climate, you had public health and safety. So, um, one of the big bills that, um, a lot of local governments were supporting was Senate Bill 5770, which would have lifted the one percent property tax cap. Um, the legislature made the decision not to move forward with that bill, given, um, a lot of different things, um, including the initiatives. And so, um, we'll, we'll see if that bill, or a version of that bill comes back next legislative session. They, uh, there was a bill for the Evergreen Basic Income Pilot Program, um, that did not pass, but a bill to make the Economic Security for All was made permanent. Um, I expect to see the Evergreen Basic Income Pilot Program come back. There, an, in the Evergreen Basic Income Pilot Program come back. There in terms of some of the big housing bills that were passed, co-living, which is something that the the council supported, that did pass. And there is a there was a bill that was also passed that is a new incentive program for cities to convert existing commercial buildings to residential buildings for affordable housing. And it's a sales and use tax deferral program. And there are some requirements in there in terms of the affordability component, at least there has to be at least 10% of the units that have to be affordable. And you can layer this with MFTE, but the affordable units have to be on top of the MFTE affordable units if you have that MFTE. And some of the bills, the big bills that were talked about that did not pass, but I expect them to come back next year are rent stabilization, lot splitting, transit oriented development, and rural ADUs. So last year was the year of housing. This year, they were saying would be the year of housing too. And so next year, we'll see how many more housing bills come back. So on climate, one of the the measures that the city was in support of was House Bill 1589, which allows Puget Sun Energy to accelerate their move away from natural gas to electrification. That did pass. There is potentially going to be an initiative on the ballot to repeal that and create some restrictions around state and local governments and what they can do around natural gas. Representative Walsh, who's the the chair of the Republicans, state Republicans, has three initiatives that he has filed, and the Building Industry Association has an initiative. And right now, there's a little bit of a legal challenge on the ballot title and description. And there is going to be a hearing next week on that by a Thurston County judge. And once they decide where they're at with that, the representative Walsh and the BIAW have said that they will combine whatever it is they're going to do so they have one initiative on the ballot if they can get all of the signatures that they need before November, which is probably going to be about 400,000 signatures that they'll need on that. So in terms of other climate bills, there were there were bills around extreme weather events where there's going to be grants for local governments to help people during extreme hot, cold, or wildfire smoke when that happens. They passed a bill that phased out mercury from lighting product products, reducing lead in cookware, zero emission school bus grant program, food waste reduction, and organic material management. That bill passed. And there is would be local governments that are subject to the organic material management collection will be eligible for funding from that program. On public public health and safety, they the legislature eliminated the 25% cost share that local governments have for the Basic Law Enforcement Academy. And they put $4 million in the budget for that. So they're going to the state will cover 100% of the cost of that program. They passed a bill that allows law enforcement workers to work part-time and remain in left two, which is their retirement system. They established a grant program for first responder wellness and requires the Criminal Justice Training Commission to develop a training program for first responder peer support and a task force on first responder wellness. And behavioral health, they passed a bill that extends liability protections for responders that are dispatched from mobile rapid response crisis teams. They put $21 million into enhanced and expanded opioid treatments and over $5 million for drug awareness prevention and education campaigns. The and not on your list, but something that's that was also important to the city was a land use bill that Representative Griffey sponsored. And it allows Thurston County and other counties and the cities within those counties to give them an additional six months on their comp plan review for the comp plan that's due next year. So that was that was important around land use issues. Before I go on to the 2024 elections, does do you have any questions that that I can answer for you or attempt to answer for you?
Yes, thank you, Debra. There is one bill, I believe, that it would have allowed cities to standardize the permitting process for affordable housing development. And we don't I don't believe we have a position on that bill. But and I don't believe it passed. But I'd just be curious, you know, if we could look into that. I'm not sure if we have a position on it, but I'm very I'm curious about that bill.
I'll look into that.
Councilmember Cooper.
Thank you, Mayor Payne. I don't think my questions for Debra might actually be for the chief. I'm curious if the numbers we got around staffing last week included a reduction in our participation in the in the law enforcement academy, because I might get you like one more car. It does already include that?
It's a very small portion that we picked. So the savings out there that's giving us is it's nice, but it's not going to be a whole car.
Dust. Okay. Thank you very much. I should repeat because he wasn't on.
I was just going to say that. Yes.
Do you want me to or do you want?
You.
Okay. So the chief answered my question that it's a nominal amount of savings in our total budget and not enough for a police car. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm wrangling the hands. Thanks. Mayor Pro Tem win.
Yeah. Thank you for your presentation, Debra. I was really curious about the first responder wellness requirement that'll be carried out by the Criminal Justice Training Commission. Can you talk a little bit more about that and one that'll be implemented?
Well, if it was passed in the bill, it would the effective date should be next month. I don't have the details on that, but I can certainly get back to you on what it is that they'll be doing and when it starts and and that kind of thing.
That would be great. Thank you.
All right. Looks like we can move on with the presentation when you're ready.
Okay. So this is a list of, and I accidentally left off Senator Kaiser because she's also announced that she's leaving. These this is the list of legislators that I know of that have said that they are either leaving the legislature or leaving their position and maybe running for a higher office or a different office. And so as you can see, that's a lot of people. And this is filing week, so we'll see if any there's any anything new that comes out of that. Many more surprises of people maybe who don't file for reelection. And so all of the House and half of the Senate and all of the four-year statewide offices are up for election. We know that we're going to have new a new governor, a new attorney general, a new commissioner of public lands, a new insurance commissioner. So there's going to be a lot of changes in state government in 2025. And so that I think it's just kind of interesting just to see it all on on one list. And depending on some people who maybe who aren't who are not running for reelection but are running for another office, if they get moved or like in Senator Kaiser's instance, she's leaving the legislature, but her term isn't up, it could create additional changes in terms of domino effects with appointments to those seats too. So. So as I mentioned, if the the Climate Commitment Act is repealed and the capital gains revenue is taxes repealed, that's going to have a big, big impact on the state budget for next session. So we'll have to see, you know, how the the legislature wants to deal with that. I know that when I worked, I worked in 20 years in state government, and I went through my share of budget reduction exercises. And so if those initiatives pass, I expect to see a lot of that happening across state agencies. The legislature will have to fund public education. And so any money that would have gone to from these from the capital gains revenue, for example, it's going to have to come from somewhere else. So we'll have to see what happens there. In meantime, we should be talking with our legislators. We know we're going to have a different delegation next year. Senator Hunt's retiring, so that's going to create some changes. And but we should be having our delegation meetings and talking with them about issues that are important to the city and hearing from them about what their priorities are as well. And doing the the work that's required on that, taking a look at, again, what maybe, for instance, on behavioral health, if there's something that the city wants to do around that, me talking with potential partners and the behavioral grants, community capacity grants opens up in December of this year, which the they will be taking the state will be taking a look at the applications and they'll make recommendations to the legislature for funding. The legislature did put in additional $82 million into that for the supplemental in the capital budget, and they are looking at future projected future expenditures of over $1 billion. So I think behavioral health, substance use disorder is going to continue to be a really strong issue that the legislature deals with, including housing, homelessness, and climate. So the just things to be to be thinking about as you develop your 2025 agenda. And with that, I can address any more questions. Turn it back over to Susan.
So my favorite part of the legislative work is to work on the next year's agenda. So while I have your guys' attention, I'd like to just hear if there's any initial thoughts on 2025, if there's anything that's a departure from what we've done this past year, or just what's on your minds.
Any questions from the deists or comments? Mayor Pro Tem win.
Oh, this is probably seemingly obvious, but anything that we didn't get, I'd love to see. I'd love to see that on the next one, at least as a draft. I think there's some on there that might seem and feel like pie in the sky. Things around more protocols for gun safety, the wealth tax, things like that. But also, you know, it seems like every day stranger things have happened. So I'm actually feeling more motivated somehow by that. So yeah. I also think about the estuary. I feel like we should keep on asking for funding or partnering to ask for funding until we see an estuary there. But of course, our colleagues, councilmembers Cooper and Madron, would know a little bit more about that as they're serving on the work group. Yeah. That's it for now.
Councilmember Madron.
This kind of goes along with like, you know, all the things that we didn't get, we still want to get. And I just want to lift up rent stabilization. It got further than it ever had in this past session. And I think that should remain a pretty high priority, considering the tenant protection work that we've done here and the need for, you know, tenants across the state to be able to be more stable in their homes. I'll probably have more as things go on. I'm, you know, I I I have a lot of trepidation around those three initiatives coming up on the ballot. And that's where most of my where my mind mostly goes when it comes to session next year is the high degree of uncertainty with the with the with the kind of things that we want to be working on as a city, you know, how it's going to impact our climate initiatives, our affordable housing initiatives, you know, the need to respond to the opioid response, all of those things. So not really direction to you, just kind of voicing the 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 high degree of uncertainty that makes it kind of like difficult to think that far ahead.
Councilmember Parsley.
I agree with everything that's been said. I have two questions. One goes to our city manager and attorney. What's the process for us to be able to weigh in on these initiatives that are going to be coming forward to the public?
The initiatives will be ballot measures. So you're going to have all the restrictions that the Fair Campaign Practices Act puts into place and the Public Disclosure Commission. So council and the city will have to be very careful in public comments to not make those from city property, using city resources, or from the dius, or permitting persons to come in at public comment and use the lectern to be able to make such statements. So in that respect, you can do a public hearing where you have an open opportunity to all persons to speak for or against a ballot measure, and you can take a public position by resolution. That's been done in the past. That is permissible.
That I would love to get that on the calendar. You know, obviously, what are the other six people say? But that would be interesting to me. The one area for I guess it would go under financial stability was a bill that I heard prior to the Evergreen Basic Income that was speaking to being able to give the amount of money to families with high needs, family members, because they'd already budgeted this for nurses. But because we don't have enough nurses, families were losing jobs, staying home. And I would like to see us support that if it comes back, because I sat through that whole hearing and I was impressed by this particular Senate bill. And I was surprised it did not make it out of committee because the money's already there. And it would have helped so many families that are waiting for nursing help and are not getting it.
Councilmember Cooper.
Thank you, Mayor Payne. I like this conversation too, Susan. Of course, the 1% cap. Take a whole page and just write 1% with a circle with a line through it. I think that we're at a place where we need to make be making hundreds of millions of dollars in investments in the opioid epidemic and not tens of millions of dollars of investments. I just heard that in Portland, the city, the county, and the state are coming together to make a $40 million investment in one city. And so I think it's important that we look at the little tiny bit of money we're getting from settlements, from a problem that's caused by the pharmaceutical industry, and figure out how to come around at a statewide level because we're certainly not going to be able to come up with the resources needed at the local level. I'd love it if the continued conversation around housing includes neighborhood retail. That that bill that almost passed to look at having retail and commercial in neighborhoods is is important to us in order to make our density goals. And and the whole state should be on the same playing field in that space, I think.
HB 2252.
That one and more. Yeah. But yeah, what she said. And then just for me, the whole economic mobility, economic justice, environmental justice, they're all intertwined. And I think I'd like to see the state kind of figure out how to bring those conversations together. I'm tracking the Economic Justice Alliance, the, you know, folks appealing the Heal Act. Some agencies are at the table, some aren't, and and really need to to look at, you know, how do we center the work around the people that are are struggling to pay for groceries like we heard from outside of grocery stores in Olympia. And fascinatingly, we've implemented basic income through the Employment Security Department, and no one's talking about it. But quit talking about a pilot and grow that program, put more money in it, because it's already statewide. It's focused right now on people who work, but they get $1,000 a month for the first year of their job, and there's $35 million in the pot already. So I would say let's let's grow that program and stop talking about piloting basic income and just, you know, like you talk about federal programs for all, just, you know, put more bones on it. And and then just like from a really from really quickly, from a from a personal perspective, in my day job, in my work with the Alice Report, that new data will be coming out in in a in a couple of weeks. And we continue to see the cost of groceries cost as much or more as rent or childcare. And policy levers around groceries are buy food, give food. It's really simple from the policy perspective compared to all of the money and time and studying it goes into looking at housing and childcare. And so we'd just love to see food elevated. I actually have this funny feeling that a universal I actually have this funny feeling that a universal food program would save the state a whole bunch of money.
Any other comments from Nadeos? Councilmember Vanderpoel?
In addition to most of what my councilmates have said, you know, tax flexibility, you know, the one percent cap is one thing, but the ability for us to create and manage our taxes flexibly in times where there is uncertainty in the budget would just be great because a lot of the times having to rely on grants to get things done is, is, you know, it's good for to get stuff going, but having to rely on that to do the things that we need to do is, it's, 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 it's not effective. So we really do need more flexibility in our tax because one thing that's a big need to me, and I didn't see it up there, is for years and years and years, the state has talked about high-speed rail and I have not seen it gone anywhere. We've reports and studies on it, but I really think that they need to move forward on this if they're ever going to do it. Other things, the condo laws, which is something that we've discussed, that we need to get some revisions on that so it'd be easier to develop condominiums. And kind of just the legislature look at, you know, working class housing income, or housing for working class incomes, you know, that thirty through seventy percent AMI that we're not really covering. Right? And so that's kind of, there's probably more, but that's the top things off the top of my head.
Well, this is just the first cut, so.
Okay.
There's more time.
Councilmember Parsley?
I just wanted to say thank you to both of you. It's a lot of work and, you know, lining us all up to go speak at hearings for us. I know that was, we would say, well, follow this bill and you would get us signed up, you get us talking points. I just want to say thank you to all the staff and to you two.
Councilmember Madron?
Yeah, I just wanted to, what Councilmember Cooper was saying about food security, but, you know, buy food, give food type programs. There was so much of that going on during COVID. The legislature put a ton of funding into supporting local farmers and getting food into local communities. And so we know how to do that stuff. And one other thing I, I wanted to mention in terms of, you know, affordable housing, like pending crisis is the needs of manufactured home communities and the challenges of when the land gets bought beneath them. There's been some work at the legislature around resident owned cooperatives and stuff like that. But one of the challenges that we're seeing through the Regional Housing Council and in Thurston County is there's, there are many, many manufactured home communities. And when their land goes up for sale, it's, it's, it's a crisis. And we've thought a lot, there's some policy development going on at the Regional Housing Council, what we can do at the local level to, you know, at the very least try to like, you know, address, to, 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 you know, make it as easy as possible for folks if they have to relocate. But like, there's not enough resources locally to help people in, you know, buying land and cooperative ownership and, and being competitive on the market. So that's, that's another thing that, we'll, we'll see some stuff coming out of the Regional Housing Council. There's a manufactured home community committee that is working on that from our advisory committees. So stay tuned for more on that.
Awesome. Thank you.
Any other comments from council? All right. So I, obviously, the, I'm increasingly worried about our, our state's solution for addressing homelessness when it comes to supporting local governments with this. So the situation, we're making incredible progress and I would hate to see that progress stalled. And so we really need a solution for what the state is going to do to support local governments across the state for how to handle encampments on private property. I believe there was a bill. I'm not sure if it even saw the light of day. I can't recall, but certainly we need some assistance with that, you know, as well as, you know, continuing to address homelessness or what we would call hotspots. So not even just encampment focus, but we need, we need a broader response. And so would love to see some additional support from the state in that regard. Obviously, the property tax cap is certainly, again, I would say for next year, front page. You know, I know we're early on before we're talking about design and all of that, but certainly at the top for me. And along with Jim's comment, or excuse me, Councilmember Cooper's comment, for the economic justice comments that you made, you know, I, I think that maybe we want to think about what that looks like in terms of maybe having a section for that. You mentioned that there was the basic income. But I'm also inclined to, to go out on a limb here and, and say something that's sort of related to that, which is that the legislature, I believe they provided one-time monies, two-hundred million dollars in the community reinvestment account through the Department of Commerce for communities affected by the war on drugs that are specifically Black, Latino and Indigenous. That's one-time money that will go away at some point. And I believe they're tasked with coming up with a plan on how to study that. So I'm interested in, in maybe thinking, exploring how we might add this to our legislative agenda because I frankly think that our legislature should be studying reparations for the descendants of enslaved people. I think that obviously we're long overdue for that. And that is something that I think is related to the basic income conversation. And so that's something that I think we should be maybe thinking about carving out a little section to talk about how we're going to meet the needs of people in our communities whose pockets are hurting, frankly, and inflation just is, is not making that any better. And so we need really, there are some great items that we have here on our legislative agenda, but I really would like to see this time around some more things that are really going to affect people's pockets in our community and, and have that on, on our legislative agenda. And also, since we're early on in this conversation, is to think about how we might engage our community even more. So I know we got some feedback before about our community members not necessarily feeling like they were part of this discussion that we're having right now. So, and obviously our community probably has some strong feelings about what should be on our legislative agenda as well. So I'd be interested in hearing that. Councilmember Cooper?
Thank you, Mayor Payne. I wanted to just thank you for lifting up the Community Reinvestment Plan and Community Reinvestment Act. I'm actually working on a project on that already in my day job. And I think there's, you're going to see statewide coalition around poverty pop up outside of government. Right now, government's strangely driving the conversation in our state, which is not normal, but it's great. And one of the, actually, one of the things I thought of when you were talking, Mayor Payne, is it would be really cool for the council at, in a study session environment to have Cory, or Corbett Mosley, the leader of that program from Commerce, come and tell us about the thirty different grant programs that they're investing in Black, Latinx and Native people in, in this state that were disproportionately harmed by the war on drugs. It's the reparations for that harm, at least the first investment. And it, they're right now really hoping to just get out and tell the story more. And so if we could figure out a time to invite Corbett, the leader of that program from the Department of Commerce, to come and just talk about all of the moving parts and everything that's going on, the, the really cool buy and for registration that they've implemented across the state so we can really see what the organizations serving community that are run, buy and for people that need services that are, that are disenfranchised and marginalized is, it's really cool. And it's one of a kind, one of its kind in the country. And it, it would be good for a city like Olympia to be a little bit more in the know.
Mayor Protem, when?
Susan, I'm interested, maybe not necessarily putting this on our one pager, but I wonder if you could do some looking into this and, and share, you know, whatever information you find. But we've had someone and, and someones kind of here and there, not an abundance of people, but I've been hearing some interest from community members on supporting like a bill against weight discrimination. And so I just wonder, yeah, I wonder what, what, what the sort of appetite for that would be like. And then also, like, what is that, what would, if you can find the information, like, what is that calling for? You know, what are the specifics on it? And I don't think it's, I think it's valid. And I also don't find it very far-fetched, knowing that just a couple of sessions ago, hair discrimination was one of the things, right? And these are one of those things that like, it might sound sort of silly at first, but then when you get into the bill, it's like, oh, okay, that's why they're doing that. But if you could look into that, that'd be really lovely.
Any additional comments? And I'll just add one more, obviously, in regards to public safety. We just had our, our study session last week with our, on the strategic plan for our police department. And one of the things that I had noticed or pointed out is it seemed like it was a short-term thing, the fact that we're going to be, you know, having ten additional officers or maybe eventually sixteen. But I don't see that scenario getting any better. And so any support from the legislature to help local governments continue to meet the needs of the increasing public safety demands is, is obviously important as well. Anything else? All right, that's it for now.
You so much.
More to come.
Thank you.
Thank you both. And, and both of you, I know how difficult and how fast-paced the legislative session is. And for both of you to be tracking this information in real time when it's happening is a daunting task. So thank you very much for your work and looking forward to the next biennium. It should be a good session. Thank you both. Have a good night. All right. So that concludes our business items for this evening. So we will move on to council reports. I'll just start with my report. I don't have much to report, or actually I have nothing to report because I became ill after last Tuesday's meeting. And I had quite a few things on the calendar, one being an art dedication over Martin Way. And I'm so sorry to have missed that. And, but the city manager attended in my absence and I just wanted to thank him again and thank Stephanie Johnson, the staff liaison, to the Arts Commission for the invitation to speak. And yes, and I will start to my right with Councilmember Madron.
Okay, I've got a, a couple of reports. The Land Use and Environment Committee met on April twenty-fifth. We had two things on our agenda. One was downtown parking. So we received a briefing here in council chambers from Chelsea Baker Van Druud around the parking strategy for downtown. And then she followed up and came to the Land Use and Environment Committee to talk about some proposed changes to help implement that strategy. And so what we're looking at is changing hours of enforcement for downtown parking from, to eight AM to seven PM on weekdays and then adding ten AM to seven PM on Saturdays. She talked about night safety because that's a concern from some folks, you know, if they have to walk a little bit further to get to their parking spot. And what she mentioned about that is, well, for one, we have crew that goes until three AM now. But also with later enforcement hours, there will be more staff out on the streets in, into, at least until seven PM. So there's that. She also talked about adding an hour, eliminating two-hour parking and doing three hours instead, because one thing that we've heard a lot from the community is that like, you know, if you've got an appointment downtown, getting your hair done or a tattoo, like sometimes two hours is just not enough. And so just changing all the two hours to three hours. There's also a lot of meters that are not receiving any coins. And meter maintenance is a kind of a pain because it can be hard to get parts to, to fix them and replace them. So we're looking at, at doing on-street mobile payments only in the, the areas of nine-hour meters that they are not pulling any coins from. So we'll be pulling some meters out. They're looking at leased lot management and looking at converting some of those to pay-by-phone spaces. Also wayfinding to help people know where they can park. And so that's, that's the, the suite of recommendations that staff brought to us. And they, we gave them the go-ahead to start doing some public engagement around that. So that's the next step before anything comes to council. The other item that we discussed was neighborhood centers. You know, we talked about that a little bit earlier in the meeting. So our staff had been working for a long time. There's been a couple of delays in this work for a few different reasons, but on a neighborhood center strategy. And they looked, they evaluated existing neighborhood centers, like looked at those neighborhood characteristics, did market analyses. They looked at challenges and opportunities for each of our designated neighborhood centers, did public engagement, evaluated policy and regulatory frameworks and identified near and long-term actions. And I won't get into the, the details of what's proposed in the strategy, but I'll talk a little bit about the conversation that we had as the Land Use Committee. Ultimately, this strategy is going to lead to some changes in our comprehensive plan to help direct this work forward. And what we asked from staff in that, in, in the Land Use Committee was to kind of go, go a little bit bigger than what's being proposed. One of the big challenges with neighborhood centers is like, you can't like necessarily pick out a spot on a map and say, okay, somebody put a business there. Like, you know, it's, it's a really difficult thing to do. You know, we could, we can change codes to make it easier to do it and we need to do that, as we discussed, you know, earlier this evening. And that's part of the strategy. But, you know, Councilmember Cooper brought up HB twenty-two fifty-two earlier, which was a bill that would have required all cities to allow neighborhood cafes anywhere in residential areas. It was amazing. It unanimously passed in the House and then completely bombed in the Senate. It was really weird. But that's kind of the discussion that we had. It was like, you know, why, you know, yes, yes, we should have designated neighborhood centers and we should invest in changing those codes to make them more flexible and do economic development initiatives to help those neighborhood success, neighborhood centers be created on the ground. But also, why, why not also just allow other small commercial uses throughout neighborhoods and let them organically be created? So that's the conversation that we had. And so when this comes to council, we, it will be presented to us, you know, what is in the strategy that was created. But also, we asked that staff bring the iterative conversation that came out of the Land Use Committee and, and also the Planning Commission and, and have that help form how we change our comprehensive plan to advance neighborhood centers, the ones we have designated and new ones where, where they might be created with just more flexibility all around. There was also, the very next day, retreat for, at Lot. Actually, Matt Cannelly did not want us to call it a retreat. He wanted us to call it advancement. So we, thanks for that look, Jim. But we did spend the day together and we're working on the strategic plan for the next six years. And just to give some high-level oversight, a, a high-level overview of what we discussed, we talked about some of the community support programs, ones that we wanted to continue and others that we wanted to right-size. You know, we talked about continuing septic-to-sewer conversion program and right-sizing the water conservation program. We've done a lot of great job implementing water conservation and there gets to be a certain point where like, you know, we've kind of done most of what we can do around that. And so there's less investment needed. Talked about water quality and habitat improvement and investments for supporting the ongoing sediment management needs for the dischutes estuary, public health support programs, so like hygiene and human waste and like the, the things Lot can do to help support, you know, people living outside in ways that support water quality. And we also talked about expanding the Affordable Housing Support Program. So that's, this is the discount on connection fees for So this is the discount on connection fees for affordable housing and continuing that pilot through the next strategic planning period, so through 2030. And we also had some conversation around, you know, how do we get more recycled water into play? And it's a pretty like, big conversation. And one of the challenges is it's really expensive to use recycled water because you need a lot of infrastructure to make that happen. And, you know, Olympia is actually closest to where that recycled water is being created. But we're actually pretty secure in our water rights for quite a while. So like, how do we have some regional conversations to figure out how to use more recycled water? And like, you know, figure out how we can broaden the conversation and make it more regional? But there's more to come on that, but we had some discussion around it. We talked about other things too, but I've been talking enough. I'll just say really quick, TRPC met on May 3rd, and we were looking at our call for projects for the federal funding that comes through TRPC. The evaluation criteria that we've used in the past includes efficient use of federal funds, advancing the Sustainable Thurston goals around urban centers and corridors, greenhouse gas emissions reductions, equity, and two more goals are being added, which is around active transportation and safety. And I'll just leave it at that for now because it's getting late, and I could keep talking, but I'll stop.
Any questions or comments for Councilmember Madron? Councilmember Vanderpoel?
Yeah, I have a couple of things. So, these things tonight. I swear this one is louder than that one. I could hear myself in that one. I can, I'm not yelling. I'm trying. Be a little calmer. Just try to be a little calmer. So at Arts Walk, I went to the Locals Only. Hello? Yeah. Wow, this thing's on. Great tonight. So I went to the Locals Only thing at the Olympia Film Society, which a lot of, which was a lot of local films by local artists. And some of those films were created with Olly Film, which is one of our tenants at the Armory. And so seeing that connection out in the world while just kind of going about my day and going to the different events is really great because it comes back to what we're doing. I did a ride-along with OPD the other day, and that was very insightful, just to see what was going on out in the world, to see, you know, the different calls that they go on, very informative. And especially when people are asking me about speeding and what's going on. Now I have an understanding of, you know, where the patrols are going and this and that, and kind of bringing that context to our conversation we had the other day. I did attend the Gateways Crossing event, which was great. And the art installation, it was really great because we got to see the, what an area that's very like, I guess, not very pedestrian-friendly in a lot of ways. There's a lot of cars that come through there. But to see it kind of come together, and it makes you feel that, okay, this is more, this could become more of like, a hub to a couple neighborhoods because you had people from various neighborhood centers, neighborhoods, neighborhood, kind of meet there and talk about that crossing. And so it really does kind of improve the feeling of the neighborhood and just by, just adding more art to it, just by adding that. It really makes you, like, I feel less, I feel safer to cross the street just because I feel like there's not, there's something there that isn't just, it's more welcoming in that sense. So I also went to the Family Support Center with Puget Sound Energy, had ribbon cutting, which was really cool. And they, you know, talked about the solar energy project that's there through their grants. It's good to see these like cooperative projects, to see where we're going, providing housing, but also providing more local power in a way that, you know, we don't have to build transmission lines further and further out. I did on Sunday go to the occupation rally. That was very interesting. I got to see a lot of compassionate members of our public and very active. It was great to see people peacefully talking about an issue. It's larger than Olympia, obviously, but it's very, it's good to see that our community is passionate about an issue that matters to them in a way that was peacefully done. And to extend upon that, I would like to say that it's great to see that the Evergreen State College is leading the way by meeting with students and peacefully meeting agreements to divest, which is something that not all, it's not in the news. You see all of the protests happening nationally. But to see a local community working in a way that is towards peace and towards solutions that I find, it's good to live in a community where we're leading on a lot of, on this. So, yeah, that's my report.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for Councilmember Vanderpoel? All right, Mayor Pro Tem win.
One moment, I'll have one screen. Yeah, so on April 20, sorry, on Wednesday, April 24th, the Community Livability and Public Safety Committee met. We talked about some pretty popular items on council, which is popular in that you know a lot about it. It's the Olympia Downtown Alliance update, the good discussion with Todd Cuts about the different happenings at the Downtown Alliance. And a couple of kind of key things that came out of that was a robust conversation on, you know, we all agreed that we are really unhappy with the vacant buildings downtown. And we had different ideas of what that might look like. An idea of having a fee came up. Some thought that might be punitive, some did not. The idea of just trying to do more pop-ups and maybe making it entrepreneurial pop-ups. And so anyways, it attends, it keeps or remains being something that's really on folks' mind. And it is such a disservice in our downtown to have vacant space. And so I hope we'll keep on chewing on that. And then, of course, with the update, Todd did talk about the success of the Downtown Guide Program. And when asked, you know, what can Olympia do to continue in our good partnership with the Downtown Alliance, there is, I think as everyone knows, a request to continue the Guide Program. So looking forward to seeing how that shapes up. And then there's a Creative District update from Mike Reed and then also Deisha Versa. As we saw in our study session not too long ago about the Artesian, the Artesian Light Market, yeah, Deisha just absolutely knocked it out of the water as a new employee. And she was just talking through the update like she had been here for years, and it was great. So that is something that I know will come to council, but I think you all will be really interested in the creative, the broader Creative District update, and so I'll forward that to you. A conversation that came out of that was like, where are these wayfinding signs? And so I think they are going to get back to us with a timeline about that, but also trying to respect that they'd like to, yeah, they'd like to not make it something that the city just does quickly with our graphic design, public works, but to really let it be led by community artists. And so that's something that we respect, and also we would still like to see them. Something unique that I got to do this past weekend was be an emcee for the Seroptimus International Olympia Group. And one of their annual events is the South Sound Exceptional Women Awards. And I thought that it would be appropriate to share, especially during Public Service Recognition Month, that Kim Condrat, one of the city employees, was a recipient of a South Sound Exceptional Women Award. I'm not sure how many folks knew about that. But, yeah, so I'll send this to you and just kind of, in an email, and just a poke and see if you want to ping her about it. I'm sure she would appreciate it. But I'd like to take the time to just quickly read the, what the nomination or the nominator said about Kim. And I think it also kind of gives us a lens into not only how great employees of the city are, but the things that we don't see that other people see that they do in the community. So the nominator was someone from the faith community that, or the parish that Kim goes to. So she stated that Kim has been an exceptionally dedicated example of a Catholic Christian who leads a women's prayer group, has served as a leader in our homeless shelter program, conducted sang and played music in their worship services, and volunteered her services for their youth ministry. Kim has employed, employed for a couple of years as a steward for community outreach at St. Michael's Parish and led the men's shelter outreach during the COVID crisis. She is currently the homeless response coordinator for Olympia and shows her faith to those in need. Kim provides guidance to her six children as she leads them to respond at Sacred Heart Parish with help and care to community members needing shelter, warmth, and kindness. She has brought her children to help provide food and clothing at our winter homeless shelter. She demonstrates what kindness looks and feels like to those in need, creating a legacy of compassion with family by her side. During COVID, she coordinated a women's shelter to provide for those without shelter. Fellow Sacred Heart Parish members have witnessed her caring responses towards those needing support during very challenging times during their interactions. Kim is a woman of action, driven by empathy, and an open heart for goodness. Thanks for listening, and I hope you give her a shout.
That's great. Thank you for sharing that, Mayor Pro Tem, and how fitting for Public Service Recognition Week. Any questions or comments for Mayor Pro Tem win? Councilmember Madron?
Yeah, you reminded me that the night before that Seroptimus event, I was at a Homes First event, and Kim Condrat was recognized as a real community hero. And there was a bunch of, yeah, two nights in a row. She is, yeah. So two nights in a row, a city employee was celebrated by community organizations, and I think that's really cool. It was the real community heroes that Homes First acknowledges.
Councilmember Parsha?
Thanks, both of you, for calling out our public servant that works for our city and all the good things she does. I have only two things to report. One's relatively short, which was the Thurston Climate Collaborative Steering Committee met one week after our retreat. So it was a pretty short meeting. We elected the next executives for the committee. I am the chair. Eileen Swarthouth from Timwater is the vice chair. We did approve our executive committee charter and got an update from the Community Action Work Group and jurisdiction updates, and then set up the idea of our regional initiative. One more time, we are going to get something to go over in July. And the key to the regional initiative is it has to be something only, can be, or only or best achieved by regional coordination. And financially, at this point, acceptable to all the jurisdictions because not all the jurisdictions have the same budget amount. So the staff members are working on that currently. And to remind you, the two that were selected during the retreat, one was looking at the density models for the three cities and neighborhood centers, and then continuing, the second one is continuing the work with the building energy efficiency and retrofit. Okay, that was human error. I can't blame, cannot blame the mics because I know I did that one. The next one is immediately following that meeting, on the same night, we had the Finance Committee meeting, and we had a pretty meaty agenda. We got an update on long-term budget sustainability and mainly in the communication area. We had a facilities condition and capital project status. I just want to point out one thing about that particular one. It always blows my mind when I see this. We make about 1.3 million a year to put into our capital facilities, but the expected amount of money spent between 2019 and 2039 is $99 million. And $5 million a year is just to upkeep it. And we have 420,000 square feet the city is responsible for. We are making some headway by each department having to pay an equivalent of a lease to help with upkeep. We also got the transportation capital update. And the one thing I wanted to point out to the council, that we got the numbers, initial numbers for our sales tax, which include, I think, which was about 3.1 million. And they went through some of the projects that we're going to be doing. Yeah, 3.1 million per year. And then the last two were the Waste Resource Facility update. And Gary Franks came in and explained where they were in this process. And they've done actually a very nice job in financing this in that they've done some rate changes a few years ago, and they've been storing away money to get some of these first phase projects done, which include site preparation and work on plan, design, plan. Lastly, we talked about the year-end money or fund balance above policy discussion. And it was decided with the committee's full approval that we weren't really going to have a conversation about what kind of monies were there until later in the year as we go through our budget stability. And potentially, in the future, we might look at a different way of approaching the year-end monies from the previous year, just to make sure that our departments have adequate funding for projects that show up. And also to give the city manager and Aaron B. Miller adequate ability to adjust to the, what looks to be a tight 2025 budget. Did I get that right, Jay? Okay.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for Councilmember Parsha? Councilmember Vanderpoel?
Did they give you, on transportation, did they give you an idea of what projects they think they're going to do first? Or do you have any idea what things that they were considering? I'm just curious.
That would be something more Land Use would be probably better to ask for, their projects. They talked about a bunch. They had the Boulevard Bike Crossing, Walking Crossing, they had the Fourth and Plum, the Bike Corridor, and I can't read my own writing, Sidewalk Repair and Assessment, Sidewalk Repair. They're going to have 19 sites, Phones Road, Elliott Avenue Sidewalk, Chip and Seal Projects, and so forth.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Councilmember Cooper?
Thank you, Mayor Pan. Just two quick items. Now I feel like I can't hear myself. You got me all paying attention to the microphone. So two quick things. One is I learned this week, this is kind of a government and nonprofit bulletin, if you will. The federal government is the final rule-making process through OMB, the Office of Management and Budget, to raise the single audit threshold from 750,000 to $1 million a year. So when you have to do a single audit for federal funds, that threshold will raise, likely October 1st. And then within that, they also changed the de minimis indirect rate from 10% to 15% for all nonprofits and governments doing federal grants that haven't pre-negotiated their indirect rate, which I believe we are one. So that is a pretty, you know, as long as you can afford more admin within your project, which is another side of the coin. But I thought that was really exciting, and it's just a good public thing, public notice to put out in our community, since we have a lot of nonprofits and a lot of governments. And then I had a fun opportunity a week ago Sunday to go and talk at my parents' house of worship, the Olympia First Baptist Church. They are talking about their mission work, and they decided to start having a community moment on Sunday mornings. And so they asked me to be the first one. And so I came to talk about the state of downtown and what faith organizations can do to help. And so in five minutes or less, which, you know, imagine that, right? They were really nice. They let me go on a little bit. And it was interesting preparing for it. And so just a couple of things I want to pass along. So preparing for these comments, I thought, well, let me just drive around the blocks next to the church and compare them to the blocks that I frequent. And I think that it's important to, as we claim a lot of success, like, we still have a lot of work to do in our downtown, but we're doing really good. And we're doing really good in the core. And I don't think, I think we all know that it's important to remember that that experience is different property by property. One of the things I noticed in that driving is sort of a, an area south of Sylvester Park, like, from the old Greyhound station to Union and over to Jefferson, like, where the post office is, where there's a lot... where the post office is, where there's a lot of parking lots. And there's a lot of not, like inactivity during the day. And the result of that is, as we get better and better of waking people up on doorsteps in the, the state and Fourth Corps, they're moving up, up downtown. People are when they're, when they're finding spots to sleep and, and stay dry and warm. And so the impact on businesses, I think, is migrating through downtown. And I think it's just important for us to pay attention to that. Um, the conversation that I talked to them about though was, how can you help, uh, everywhere from what they are doing, which is amazing. Uh, the, every Sunday, the church makes 300 lunches, um, for our houseless neighbors and, uh, delivers the, a good chunk of those to the, the Quinn Street Village, um, camp. Um, they also have an old parsonage on their property where they've actually for about four months now been hosting, uh, refugee families. So refugee families that are coming in through the new immigrant and refugee center here in Thurston County, uh, have been staying for anywhere from a few weeks to a few months while they get on their feet, uh, get stabilized, uh, and have, get a job and, and a place to live of their own, which is a, a great, a great service to the community. Um, but I also talked to them about the fact that they own a half a block parking lot, uh, and, you know, if, you know, that they can't lease to the state anymore. And so would we, you know, would they want to have a partnership around tiny homes or look at, at doing a development on, on top of that parking lot while preserving some parking underneath? And, uh, it was, it was, it was a very cool conversation. And, uh, I think the thing to be said is within all of our work, just realizing how important the nonprofits and the faith community are in success with, with government and that three-legged stool of, of, of sort of people helping people, uh, is, is, is a beautiful partnership and something that we could benefit, I think, from, um, enhancing, doing more of. I mean, I left them, I left that thinking, boy, it'd be really cool if, if we were able to talk to all of the faith organizations in our community and just about what's going on and, and what they could do to, to partner with the city. And, um, you know, that's, uh, it, it, as all of us know, but I don't know if the community generally knows this, like, we got our start in homeless services, um, because a faith organization stepped to the plate and, and sponsored an employee to, to start the project. And there's just so many different ways that that partnership can manifest and, um, while still doing right by separations that are necessary under, under our constitution, but get, get to helping people together. So, sorry to ramble, but it was, it was a cool experience for me.
Any questions or comments for Councilmember Cooper? Well, thank you for being an ambassador. Uh, you know, it's always, uh, helpful when we have council members out there talking about what's going on and what we have yet to do. Um, and, uh, you know, I think that there is, um, some overlap there with that conversation, um, in regards to how faith communities can be involved with our, um, bio initiative or Belonging in Olympia, which is something Stacy Ray is working on. And, um, part of that conversation that we had with our ceasefire resolution discussion on how, um, we are going to engage faith communities. So I, I think there's some overlap there because that initiative is about engaging, um, communities, uh, and populations that have historically have not engaged with the city. Um, so there might be an opportunity to do more of that and within that initiative. Um, at least that's how I see it. Um, and also just really quickly, I neglected to mention during, uh, special recognition, uh, to thank Olivia Salazar, Salazar de Bro and her team for their work in preparing for, uh, the cultural events that we're going to be having this weekend. Um, and also I wanted to, uh, recognize Rachel Mares, who's brand-new to the city. She's, uh, on, uh, Olivia's team as the Cultural Event Program Specialist. Um, and this was her first meeting, being here in the chambers with us tonight. And I totally spaced with everything that was going on, so I will be sure to follow-up and thank them. Uh, but, uh, city manager, take us home.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have nothing to report.
All right. Well, with no further business before the Olympia City Council, we're adjourned.